The show must go on. I'll set my show? Okay. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the public hearings for the planning and zoning for Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. If everyone could please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If the interim secretary Dexter could read the public notice?
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. Number one, application 22-07P Evergreen Walk LLC multi-family text amendment. This is a request to amend specific requirements for multifamily residential use in the Buckland Gateway Development Zone. We also have application 22-08P, also Evergreen Walk LLC, request to modify the Evergreen Walk general plan of development in accordance with Section 4.2.15D-2 and approval of a special exception pursuant to Section 4.2.15D-1 for a 165-unit residential development for a portion of 151 Buckland Road within Evergreen Walk known as Unit 7C. Both of these applications have been continued until June 28th at the request of the applicant. Then we have then we have number three, application 22-17P Skanel Properties, number 644 LLC, request for a minor re-subdivision for the redesign of the cul-de-sac at the northern end of Kennedy Road in the industrial zone. And application 22-18P Skanel Properties, number 644 LLC, request for a site plan approval for a 241,800 square foot warehouse and distribution center on 19.2 acres on properties located at 67 and 68 Kennedy Road and 352 Sullivan Avenue, all in the industrial zone. Copies of the application are on file in the office of the town clerk and the planning department and online at south windsor-ct.gov. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM at 860-644-2511, extension 2329. Bart Pasakonis, Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our order business tonight will be first to hear from the applicant, then we will hear from town staff, then we will hear from members of the public, first those in favor of the application, and then those against or having questions or concerns, and then we will hear from commissioners. We do have one commissioner out. So my list says I'll seat Commissioner Carey for Commissioner Wagner. And if anyone has a cellphone, if they could please put it to silent, we would appreciate it. And at this time, we'll call the first application. Application 22-17P Skanel Properties, and this is for the re-subdivision. I'll remind the public, if anyone does come up to speak, we do have a sign-in sheet. If you could either sign in before or after you speak and introduce yourself to the commission with your name and address. If you could put your microphone on, and I'll wish you a good evening.
Hopefully it's close enough?
Yep.
Quite audible. Chairman Pasakonis and Vice Chairman Foley and Acting Secretary Dexter, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Peter Demali. I am president of Design Professionals Offices here in South Windsor at 21 Jeffrey Drive, and I'm principal in charge for this project. And we're taking this up as if it were two separate hearings. One for the re-subdivision, and then you have elected to go to hearing on the site plan application. So we're going to take that up following the re-subdivision. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. So the applicant, as Commissioner Dexter read, is Skanel Properties, number 644 LLC, which is applying for re-subdivision approval for Kennedy Road, which is a municipal street off the northerly side of Sullivan Avenue. And our client, Daniel Madrigal, is with us remotely because he had scheduling conflict for his flight to Hartford today, so he couldn't get his flight. But he is listening in remotely tonight. And if we need to talk to him about anything, we can reach him. He's available. But incidentally, he did attend, personally attend, from Minneapolis's office all three nights that we met with whom we met, when we met with the inland wetlands agency with respect to the first application. So the project team, I'd like to introduce to you for the re-subdivision application tonight is our architect Louis Van der Lut. He is from GMA Architects. He just flew in today, this afternoon, from St. Louis. Our legal advisor in the front row in the middle is Tom Cody of Robinson, Cole &amp; Hartford. To his left is Benjamin Wheeler, who's Design Professionals Director of Operations in Landscape Architecture. And he'll be primarily focusing in his capacity as Director of Landscape Architecture tonight as Landscape Architect. Daniel Jamison, who is right behind Ben, is Design Professionals Project Manager. He's a civil engineer for the project, the PE. Dean Gustafson, Senior Wetland Scientist from All Points Technology in Waterford, right here on the aisle seat. He will be available to discuss the environmental things, if you're interested, what we've done in the northerly part of the development when we get to that point. And I think you might want to hear from him, but we've done some, I think, pretty special things. Also, Christopher McLean, who is just behind Dean. He is our traffic engineer from Langin in New Haven. So that's it for our team tonight. So the applicant has two applications before you tonight, but we're, again, we're only addressing the re-subdivision during the first of two hearings. And the only reason for this re-subdivision application is a change to the Kennedy Road right-of-way for the design of a cul-de-sac and related improvements, including drainage, lighting, and the like. Commission subdivision regulations really do not apply to the site plan application and improvements on the adjoining property, which is the subject of the second application, nor to off-site improvements other than the proposed cul-de-sac. I'd like to give you a little bit of background with respect to Kennedy Road. Some of you were here, of course, when FedEx was built, so you're familiar with that. But let me go through some aspects of Kennedy Road. Historically, the town has been responsible for Kennedy Road as a municipal street, and the town, to my understanding, as best I can figure out, actually constructed Kennedy Road when the subdivision was initially approved back in January of 1965 in the winter, some 57 years ago. And then the right-of-way was deeded to the town in March, just a couple of months later, again, in the winter months, so the town could build the street. This was, of course, before the construction season. And in those days, the town, in subsequent years, the town did build some industrial streets to further economic development purposes. Another example of this is what we call the North-South Industrial Road, which is easterly of Route 5, going from Governor's Highway up to Strong Road. That's now known as Nutmeg Road North. That was built to foster economic development, industrial development, and things pretty much fall. So it achieved the intent of the town over many, many years, but it was successful. And now we're seeing the results of that, fruits of that effort to do Kennedy Road, albeit 57 years later. Although we did have FedEx, of course, preceding this. The road was to have been 1,300 feet long, as it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in that day, back in 1965, running from Sullivan Avenue northerly to the railroad right-of-way in the rear. Again, that's 1,300 feet. But the town only built the first 850 feet of the street, and we don't know why, but failed to build a temporary or permanent cul-de-sac at its terminus, the 850-foot terminus, which is in the rough vicinity. If you've been out there, you see the old cold storage facility on the left. Basically ended there. I guess trucks would sort of turn around in that location, backing into the east as well. The remaining 450 feet of the street going up to the railroad tracks is a, and right away, is a paper street, including provision for a cul-de-sac at the end. And there also was a drainage easement in favor of the town over to the east side, that's the right side of Kennedy Road, as you're going down there, on the property known as 68 Kennedy Road, which I'll be addressing in a minute. But so they had, so they had the ability to do, as we understand it, some kind of detention basin or some kind of drainage associated with the future construction of the street if they were, the town were to build it to the full 1,300-foot length. The town staff did request that the applicant consider building the new cul-de-sac that the town had never built. It's not a requirement for our development, but we have, therefore have it on a design. And we've shown that, and that's the subject of this application tonight. And that's with the understanding, only if the, something has happened here. Oh, okay. There we go. Only if the site plan is approved, only if other... Hello? Not happening. Something else happening? Ah, something is happening. Wait a minute. Well, I'll just continue with my presentation. Hopefully the slides will catch up. So the applicant has agreed to do, build the cul-de-sac at their expense if the site plan is approved. That's the subject of the second application, of course. That's what generates the funding for this. Only if other off-site improvements are kept to a minimum, and I'll get back to this in a moment. I'm out of order here. Hold on one second here. Okay. Sorry about that. We're out of order. Hopefully these are okay. Okay, so also, the town engineer has requested that the detention basin, we had indicated in our plans that you have before you, the detention basin for this cul-de-sac, just east of it, on 68 Kennedy Road, that that actually be deeded to the town instead of being an easement as we proposed it. Michelle has indicated to us, and I think she has in a report to you, referencing Section 2.2, the zoning regulations, that if all four parcels that we're, that we have control over, that Skanel has agreed to purchase from the Woodcock family, Four Woods LLC, if they were all consolidated, as we had proposed, that it would create an odd-shaped lot, and Section 2.2 raises some concerns about that. But that has nothing to do with our building development, and we're not building anything on the sections of it which are of concern. So let me go through those four parcels, if I may, if we can get this back up, hopefully. Thank you. We don't have to call Jeremy Smith and Nutmeg Technologies. Okay. So Michelle had indicated concern about that, so if you look at the... Okay, if you look, so here, let me just go through the four parcels, okay? First one is the shape, their location, and whether or not they're applicable to subdivision regulations. Okay, so, and it's not. But the 352 Sullivan Avenue is the big westerly piece, goes all the way down from Sullivan Avenue all the way up to railroad tracks. I'm not doing it, okay? Well, I'll describe it. Okay. Am I touching it wrong? Okay, all right, so here's 352. And that adjacent to it is 35th, pardon me, is 67 Kennedy Road. So the westerly side of Kennedy Road, on the left side, the strip going all the way up to the back is 67 Kennedy Road, and to the west of that, all the way over to the wholesale car dealership, is 352. Those two alone total just shy of 17 acres, 16.989 acres. Up along the railroad tracks is this little strip, 0.08 acre. And that was overlooked, I guess, as part of the subdivision originally back in 1965, but still owned by the Woodcock family. And that is a little strip that will address this, a third piece. And it isn't even identified, I don't think, in the assessor's office, is any, isn't given an identification number or anything, is my understanding. Although we surveyed it, all of it, our survey department. And then on the east side of Kennedy Road is this long development, a long parcel, which is nearly all upland and mature tree stand. And that's where we're proposing to have the cul-de-sac deed this over to the town here. And then we have detention basin over to the side, which we'll review in a little while. So, and that's, that's 68 Kennedy Road on the east side is 2.4 acres. So total of 19.491 acres total. But by removing this little cul-de-sac here from our tract, that leaves us with 19.245 acres, which is on the zoning data block for the second application tonight. So if you look at it, we combine these big pieces here, roughly 17 acres, and we add in this little strip, why not? Where are you going to do with it? Put it together with that, and then we put that together with 68, and that was our proposal. So it's 19.245 acres after we deduct the area for the cul-de-sac that Skanel will donate to the town. So if you look at the Regulation 2.2, as Michelle pointed out, you have this bulky parcel, which is fine for billing development, and then you have that little strip, and then you have this one, so you're wrapping around the paper cul-de-sac street. So it makes it a little odd-shaped, and your regulations discourage that. So the applicant is, to get around that, the applicant is willing to donate the entire 2.4 acres here, 68 Kennedy Road, all the way from railroad tracks down to the southerly building on the east side, or the northerly most building on the east side. And also, if you'd like, the 10-foot strip. Neither of that has any application to our development, other than we agreed with the Wetlands Commission to put them in a conservation easement. So it will be part of this large area to the north, which is going to be conserved. I think we have, we have four acres of just conservation easement alone that is proposed as we went through the inland wetlands agency review process. So Skanel is willing to donate those two, so that removes it from the parcel. So we just have one big bulky parcel, the tract, roughly 17 acres for the development, subject to the second application, and then we get around that problem with the odd-shaped parcel. And now, as I stated, the applicant has offered to build the missing Kennedy Road cul-de-sac, missing for 57 years, give or take, and drainage and related improvements, only if that is the limit of the off-site improvements. Roughly speaking, we can say that, right, Tom? Dollar cost, roughly? Yeah. Okay, so roughly, the cul-de-sac improvements, not including the cost of value of the land, is roughly $100,000 to $150,000 today's dollars with the escalating costs. In the town's, town engineer's recent memo, make sure this keeps going. Mr. Doolittle indicates that Kennedy Road should be reconstructed and repaved. I guess he's inspected it. It's not in the greatest condition, as part of our development. And the drainage should be inspected, and if in need of repair and replacement, should also be done, associated with this development. If applied, Skanel's offered to help the town with Kennedy Road's cul-de-sac, could mushroom, and just rough idea, numbers, rush it, mushroom into about a million-dollar project, Kennedy Road, the reconstruction, the cul-de-sac, all it's about, today's dollars, roughly a million dollars. So it's a seven-figure, order of magnitude of seven-figure, seven-figure project. So we're originally talking, talking $100,000, $150,000 to build the cul-de-sac that was missing and related improvements, and now that will mushroom into a seven-figure price tag, roughly, give or take, with what's been happening with construction, if you followed anything about construction costs of late. And the development at 67 Kennedy Road cannot absorb such a cost. Just can't do it. If the road now being used by FedEx, which is a much larger project than the Skanel project, it's on 60 acres, we're on 20, less those other parcels. project, it's on sixty acres, we're on twenty, less those other parcels, and other businesses, needs to be reconstructed, we, it's our opinion that the town needs to undertake that project. And after all, later on, you will hear from Chris McLean, from Langin, who will describe the probable requirement for a new signal at Kennedy and Sullivan Avenue. The state OSTA, we're going through a process with them, Chris is leading that effort. The state office of state traffic administration will likely be looking to Scannell to incur that cost, even though the signal is warranted before our project is built. So right now, today, under existing conditions with existing tenancy on Kennedy Road, Langin's study indicates that a signal is warranted now, before we start our project. So, we, we expect that to happen. We think that somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give or take, and costs are escalating, Scannell will agree to do that if required. And the, just to be important thing, the need for this improvement is not created by our project, the signal, nor for the need to improve the old Kennedy Road, the fifty-seven year old street and drainage. Kennedy Road has seen better days, but our project is not necessitating need for this. The cul-de-sac design, we'd like to get into that with Daniel Jamison, who'd like to get into the engineering aspects of this, so we'll just roll into that. Daniel?
Thank you, Peter. Good evening, the members of the commission. For the record, my name is Daniel Jamison, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, and project manager at Design Professionals. And as Peter discussed, I will be here to talk about the drainage design and design of the cul-de-sac. Here is the cul-de-sac, and I'll just zoom in on the area where we're proposing it, so you can see. So, for the cul-de-sac, the cul-de-sac was sized similar to existing larger industrial cul-de-sacs in South Windsor. The cul-de-sac is sized similar to Connecticut Ave and Talbot Lane, which are both larger than the ends of Swire and Patri Road, so this cul-de-sac will be larger than the end of Swire and Patri Road. The proposed radius is sixty-one feet. We ran a truck turn template using Autodesk truck turning diagram, considering a WB sixty-seven truck, and it did have space to make the full maneuver, if it, in the event it needed more, one needed to turn around. For drainage, runoff from the new pavement surface will drain to a proposed water quality basin on the east side of the cul-de-sac. This drain, this water quality basin will connect into the existing storm drainage of Kennedy Road. This, the rate at which it will send the storm water, the water quality basin will detain the storm water received from the proposed cul-de-sac and portion of Kennedy Road that would have been accepted in this existing catch basin, which is to be converted to a manhole. So this existing storm surface runoff will enter into the proposed underground catchment system and convey the storm water to the water quality basin for detention and treatment. And with that, the detention basin will provide or send peak flows that are less than the existing condition to the storm drainage system in Kennedy Road. We did shift the basin north to avoid two large trees identified in the southeast corner of the property there. And for regarding ENS and water quality, ENS measures were selected based off of recommendations made in the two thousand and two, ENS guidelines for Connecticut. These measures include silt fencing, inlet protection, and temporary sediment traps, or a temporary sediment trap, which will be in the place of the basin until the proposed cul-de-sac is installed or constructed. Water quality, the water quality volume provided in the water quality basin will be more than a hundred percent of the determined water quality volume for the area draining to it, as recommended in the two thousand and four Connecticut storm water, storm water quality guidelines. And we did receive some comments from town engineer Jeff Doolittle, and we feel that we will be able to work with them to satisfy those comments in our final plan. That about wraps up my presentation, and I'll be here for questions if any come up.
So just to summarize, this is, concludes our formal remarks with respect to re-subdivision. We're only here tonight because your town staff asked Daniel Madrigal from Scannell Properties to complete the cul-de-sac that was never built on this road, at his expense, so the road functions as a normal road with a proper terminus for vehicles to turn around at the end, including fire apparatus, that type of thing. So, that's the only reason we're here. He asked us to design it, and if we don't get excessive off-site improvements beyond this, then he's agreed to incur the cost, not only for the design, but also provide the land for it, and also build it, in conjunction with their development at sixty-seven, we're calling it sixty-seven Kennedy Road, because that's probably what it'll be called, although it has multiple addresses, but, so that, so that's, that's it in a nutshell. And, and the, this project will absolutely not support redoing this old street and the old drainage system. We just don't have the funds in this project to do anything of that order of magnitude, which is a rough, a seven-figure project as we see it today, today's cost. And another thing is, you know, there's a bigger project to the east, that comes right out onto Kennedy Road and uses it every day. That was approved without, and still an old road at that point, too, it was approved without them being required to, other than they did some minor improvements at the intersection. They didn't have to rebuild it, they didn't have to redo the drainage, and they didn't have to do the cul-de-sac. So we think you should take that into consideration in uniformly applying the regulations, but our client has agreed, and I think generously so, to agree to do this cul-de-sac that town never did, and to make it complete. So that concludes our formal presentation, we'll be glad that we have everybody here, our whole design team, we'd be glad to entertain any questions you may have or comments with respect to the re-subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Leip.
Thank you. This is a request for re-subdivision for the redesign of the cul-de-sac at the northern end of Kennedy Road in the industrial zone. As indicated by Mr. DeMalle, it was originally approved in nineteen sixty-five. The entire roadway was not constructed, it was, what was constructed was constructed by the town at the time, and there was never a cul-de-sac completed. So with this application, we did ask the applicant to meet the subdivision regulations by completing the cul-de-sac that constitutes a re-subdivision when you're changing a map on file in the land records, and that's why they're in front of you tonight, as a re-subdivision application. As the plans have shown, they're proposing a hammerhead cul-de-sac. This plan is slightly different than the one I reviewed, so my comments are going to be on the fly a little bit here tonight. I did have some concerns, as indicated, about the lot configuration, and also, we do have a regulation that talks about leaving ten-foot strips around properties if there's a potential that it blocks you from access to something, and there's a railroad up there. So I think the solution offered tonight of deeding that land to the town, along with the ten-foot strip, certainly satisfies any concerns I had related to the lot configuration. So I'm pleased to see that being offered by the applicant. We do have a zoning data table that I guess we'll be changing based on the size that's ultimately decided. Any site plan would require site plan approval, and that would be the subject of your next application. There is one recommendation that staff did have, related to the increase of the size of the lot now as part of this subdivision with the addition of the land to the west, we are recommending that a path, a five-foot sidewalk or a multi-use path be placed along the Sullivan Ave frontage. Section B six of your circulation design system, in the subdivision regulations states, the commission may require sidewalks on existing street frontage depending on pedestrian circulation patterns and existing site conditions. I would note the plan of conservation and development does show this area with a proposed sidewalk along this stretch of Sullivan Ave, similar to what Scannell did down in the other end of Sullivan Ave, that ten-foot multi-use path is something, is what we're having in mind in that area. Public water and sewer currently available in Kennedy Road, the applicant doesn't need any further WPC approvals at this time. There's a substantial amount of regulated wetlands on the re-subdivision area in lot. This was handled by the wetlands commission as one application, so with the, the site plan application, I'll report their findings and their recommendations for bonds and whatnot. If this application is approved, the planning department has no other requested modifications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was indicated, Kennedy Road is in poor condition, has been in poor condition for some time, and I believe it needs to be reconstructed with a new base potentially, and at least four inches of hot-mixed pavement before any more traffic, especially heavy trucks use the road. I will note, the worst part of the road tends to be the section to the north past the FedEx driveway, but it all needs to be reconstructed. I asked the design engineer if they had any soils information about Kennedy Road or the site adjacent to Kennedy Road, that would help determine the level of effort needed to reconstruct it. Requested detailed grading plans for the new cul-de-sac and copies of the truck turning templates for the cul-de-sac, so we can verify it's adequate for trucks and it is graded properly. The storm drainage pipes in the cul-de-sac need to be fifteen-inch reinforced concrete pipe per the town's standards, and again, we would work with the engineer on those. We suggested the area, the detention basin be deeded to the town as opposed to an easement, just, that's just so we have complete control over that detention basin once it's built, and the existing storm pipes in Kennedy Road be inspected and repaired. At the time, we reconstruct roads, we inspect all the storm drainage pipes, so we can fix what needs to be fixed before we repave a road, that's standard practice. As designed, the detention basin is close enough to the cul-de-sac that a guide rail would be needed, because there's three-to-one slopes right off the cul-de-sac. If these could be changed to four-to-one, it would eliminate the need for a guide rail for at least ten feet from the edge of the road, which we've requested. And then lastly, the lighting in the new cul-de-sac needs to be evaluated. There are utility poles in that area, one of which needs to be moved, but we don't know the condition of lighting, and if it's adequate, and it's probably not up to standards, in that it may not be current LED lighting, and it may not shed enough light on this new cul-de-sac as shown. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn to members of the public. This is strictly in regards to the re-subdivision of the Kennedy Road. So if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application, please stand. Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak against the re-subdivision or have questions or concerns? Please come forward. Hearing and seeing none, I'll turn to commissioners. Commissioner Bernstein.
Mr. DeMalle, you probably are the best person to speak for some general questions. So, real, real basic question to start with. The purpose of a cul-de-sac, I assume, is for vehicles to turn around?
Yeah, and it related to public safety.
Okay, so, related to public safety?
And also for public works operations, highway department, plowing and stuff like that.
Well, that's a good, that's a good segue to my next question, which is, now I heard, at least I think I heard, that typical tractor-trailers have enough room to turn around in this cul-de-sac. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's, that's what we represented, that's correct.
Do we know if one of our fire engines can turn around in this cul-de-sac?
The answer is yes.
Can you see any reason why a school bus would need to use Kennedy Street and use this cul-de-sac?
Kennedy Road, no, but a school bus could also maneuver through the cul-de-sac.
Without backing up?
Yeah, and this is, this is a large cul-de-sac, and there is no formal standard for an industrial cul-de-sac. The residential ones are smaller.
Right.
We've gone larger, and we, we looked at what some of the other industrial cul-de-sacs are in town, and made sure they were, look at templates, make sure they're big enough. So that's what we replicated.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Viteri?
Michelle, I just had a question for you. The sidewalk, there's no sidewalk in front of anyplace else during that whole stretch of, of road. Does it make sense at this point, or is there plans to add one in front of FedEx and some of the other neighboring properties?
I think the, the philosophy of this commission has been to put it in when there's an opportunity, in areas where your plan of conservation development calls for it. It's certainly a discussion point for the commission.
Okay. That was all I had.
I think that's a fair statement, yeah.
Commissioner LeBlanc?
A quick question, as regarding the cul-de-sac, the reinvention of it towards the back of the property, and it's kind of a thorny issue with me, and I see this, I travel a lot in the state, and I see these cul-de-sac or denim roads where trucks tend to park overnight, and they tend to congregate, and there's several of them hanging out there, and there's junk and trash hanging around. I'll use the end of the Plaza Manchester where Joanne's is and all that. You see a bit of that over there, and they technically at South Windsor where it crosses over in the back. It seems that's not really patrolled, and to me, that's a concern here. It's out of sight, out of mind. Trucks do tend to park in the rest areas and whatnot overnight, and I just see this as a, the golden ticket for them, to house themselves overnight, and I just think it's a bad idea. Is there something that can be done to mitigate that?
If you look, if you wait for our second hearing, we're going to be showing you our design, so that that won't be an isolated cul-de-sac in the future. It'll be part of the overall network, and vehicles will be going through there for our adjoining development on a regular basis. So it won't be this isolated end of a dead-end street where nobody's hanging out, and we have observed, our staff have observed people down at the end. So it probably cleared that up a little bit, I think the police would probably prefer it that way, and others, you know, litter and all that stuff.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Commissioner Foley?
Peter, how much?
Microphone?
Peter, how much land is being donated to the town on the east side of Kennedy Road?
There would be, if, if you agree, if the commission agrees and the town staff agree to what we've offered tonight, it would be two point four acres, which is the entire sixty-eight Kennedy Road, plus zero point zero eight acre, which is that ten-foot strip, if you choose to have that. If you don't choose to have it, we'll just retain it. We can retain the whole thing, if you want, but, and again, this is not for building development purposes, we're not building anything back there, it's just conservation land at this point, and also accommodating the cul-de-sac and that, that stuff, so. Town owns it, it's part of a great natural resource, which Dean can get into if you'd like to in the second hearing.
So, to my question is that if we own that two point four acres?
Yep.
In the future, if the town decides to do anything, so right now solely, the cul-de-sac that you're proposing is for your gain for tractor-trailers to swing into the parking lot, correct? That's what this is?
Actually, we could build our site without the cul-de-sac, because the street goes beyond where the cul-de-sac goes. We could just design, we've designed it with the cul-de-sac in mind, as requested, but we could change it to just, if we don't do the cul-de-sac, we can change it so that our site will work with the existing road. So, yeah, we'll be going through the cul-de-sac, because we're building it, we don't need it for our operations, but we're willing to do it.
Okay, and then you said in the next applications, I think I'm looking at?
Which is the site plan application.
The site plan one, I think that's what I'm looking at.
Which you've decided to go to public hearing with.
Yep. Okay, so that two point four acres is going to go to the conservation?
It would be all entirely in conservation with the, depending on what we do with the, yeah, yeah, when we reviewed that with inland wetlands agency, other than the detention basin and the cul-de-sac, everything else is going to be in conservation easement.
Right.
Of what, the property we're talking about, so it's two point four eight acres, if you take the ten-foot strip.
Okay.
That was sort of dangling out there.
Okay. Commissioner Dexter?
I'm going to come off as a little naive here, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So where does, how does FedEx exit their property? Do they exit onto Kennedy?
Yes, they have just to the, well, mid, roughly midpoint, a little bit beyond midpoint there of the street, on the east side, they go in and out exclusively from their facility. They don't go right out Sullivan Avenue, they go, they take, they go to the west to Kennedy Road, and then they go right down. So if you, Ben's going to help us out with a little exhibit here, it's right, right there. So that's their exclusive ingress and egress. So that's their exclusive ingress and egress.
Okay.
And the only one.
Okay.
Yep, so everything goes in and out of there, and then goes right down to the Kennedy Road, Sullivan Avenue intersection, and goes out, and as Chris McLean from Langdon will explain, right now, today, there's a warrant for a signal, traffic signal, before we come in, whether or not we come in.
Okay.
So tag where?
I mean, I believe the numbers, the data that Langdon probably has come up with, it's just I don't travel when those trucks are traveling, so I don't really see it. But, my question continues. Since it's a municipal road, does anybody from our staff know why that road hasn't been maintained?
It has been maintained at a minimum level because it doesn't serve very many properties. It was very lightly used until FedEx went in there.
Okay.
FedEx has used it more, this development would obviously use it significantly more. So there hasn't been really a need, I won't say need, a demand to do a lot of maintenance on it.
Okay. Is there a chance that these two warehouses could partner to make these improvements, or are we not going there? I'm going to ask dumb questions, I told you, because it doesn't seem right.
Anything is possible, yes.
Anything's possible, okay, because I'm all about that stone path in the front, doing something in the front, and I know we all can't do everything, so maybe there's some compromising that we can, we can work out. That's all I'll say for now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cavignero?
Thank you. The only question I have is, I'm just curious, and Michelle, this is a question for you if maybe you may know, do you guys know the actual reason why the road wasn't completed back then in the '60s? I know Peter said that we weren't aware, and I'm just not sure if it's down to budgetary reasons or?
Well, I'm going to go by my memory of reading minutes from that timeframe, so, and this goes back a while, but my recollection at the time was the Kennedy, or the Woodcock family was donating the right-of-way, and the town was building the road up as far as it did, because those were what funds were, and the intent was that maybe in future years, the town would be finishing the road as other development warranted. I can tell you that there was an application to the planning and zoning sometime in the '90s, so there was another re-subdivision that was done, was called the Bear re-subdivision, which created the other lots, because originally it was just two lots, and then there was a re-subdivision that created another lot on the easterly side. There was also a site plan that was denied by Planning and Zoning at the time because there was not a cul-de-sac on the subdivision, this goes back in the '90s, and I remember reading in the minutes at the time that the applicant was, well, that was the town's due, and the chairman will go talk to the town council about finishing the road. That's kind of the history that I can tell you about Kennedy Road, and really, there's been no other activity other than FedEx, that, you know, they didn't really take a lot off of Kennedy Road, they took basically a strip of a right-of-way and added it to a lot, if you recall, so they didn't really go through a re-subdivision process with that, it was a lot line revision. So this is the first re-subdivision since back in the probably '90s.
We haven't submitted it, but I actually have with me, Larry Geisler, our head surveyor, this afternoon just downloaded the maps from the town records, which is the original subdivision map from 1965, and then the subsequent one, which created the additional lot, we have that, I think Eamonn Lucick did both, and they're on file, and also the deed from Woodcock to the town in March of '65, I have a copy of that if you'd like it. We can always replicate that, so we can just give it to you, we can always, if you'd like it, we can give it to you, if it's material.
Yep, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Carey? Peter, the way that this detention basin is around the cul-de-sac, when the town comes to plow, isn't it likely they're going to be pushing snow into the detention basin? Can you tell me how that'll be plowed? And I'm under the understanding that you aren't supposed to be pushing snow into detention basins?
Well, there are other areas that are not the detention basin, the, I'd call the, if you go, consider north, be straight up the top of the right-of-way, then that southeast corner, that's the first, on the right, there's an area that's not including the detention basin, and then you get to detention basin area, and then beyond the detention basin, there's another area on 68 Kennedy Road, and then there's the existing right-of-way, which I would guess the town would choose to abandon, and the planning and zoning commission would choose to abandon, because there's no point, and I would think over time, but you still have that area to push snow. So, there appears to be plenty of area to push snow, as far as you want to push it.
Couldn't the detention basin be engineered differently so that there's a snow shelf for pushing snow?
You got to come up to my, Daniel's going to, Daniel Anderson's going to address that.
I'm also seeing that there's the potential, when snow plowing, that northern access to the trailer truck area, I don't necessarily envision your contractor always pushing it into the site versus sometimes, you know, directionally coming out of the site.
Okay, with respect to that, we can probably address that during the site plan hearing, with respect to snow removal in general if you'd like, but Daniel, you want to address that?
Hello, Mr. Chair. Regarding the snow shelf comment, we were asked to provide or change the slope on that inside of the cul-de-sac side of the basin, so in doing that, I could also provide a shelf to allow for some snow storage there. There was additional storage space in the basin for it, so I'll just have to rerun the calcs, but I don't think that'll be a problem.
How far back from like the edge of the road does the detention basin start? I just want to make sure there's adequate snow shelf.
Okay. Now, right now, our top of pond essentially starts six feet away from the edge of curb or top of curb, so we will widen that slightly, I think it was seven to 10 feet is what the requirement was, and doing that, that area plus, as Peter was mentioning, this area here that will be left to remain, will still be available for snow storage just as what is there existing. Now, I would imagine they just push all the snow and dump it in this area here. We aren't proposing any, any conditions that would impede that potential for snow to be stacked there, so I would expect that they would still utilize this as their main area, but in the event that it was a bad snowstorm condition and they see that they needed to stack in this area, we can provide a shelf to allow it.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right.
I think that's, Peter, you've heard what the town staff has recommended as far as improvements. Do you have any other issues with that? I mean, can you comply with all that, no problem, or what?
Yeah, yeah, the town engineers, you know, he'll be meeting with Daniel, I'm sure, with respect to the size of the pipes, the type of pipe, the poles, the lighting, those types of issues, the grading that can readily be achieved, so those are all minor details you're taking up. The only other thing is, the major thing which came to our attention, which is the, you know, the road needs to be rebuilt, you know, and Jeff has recommended if it gets rebuilt, it has a whole new base, which means you rip out the whole thing, and you put in a new base, and then you repave it, and you inspect the drainage, storm drainage, and if the storm drainage is, needs to be repaired, you repair it before you do all that work, or you replace it if need be, or you leave it alone, if it's okay. But that in total is, we think, a seven, with the cul-de-sac, is a seven-figure budget.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Which we can't support.
With the total rebuild? You're all set, Peter, thank you.
Thank you.
With the total rebuild, how is that done with an existing business utilizing this at the same time? I'm just curious.
So, you do it in stages, we do this with our road reconstructions all the time. Typically, they would inspect and repair the drainage first to allow traffic to go around them, peel off the old pavement, I'm assuming the base under this does not meet today's standards, because I have no idea what base was put in, and underneath that base, I believe, is probably pretty sandy, silty soils. So they would, in stages, excavate out the base, put in new base, let traffic travel over the new base, kind of as they were doing that, and then when they get finished, grade it and pave it, and again, working around existing traffic. That is the worst-case scenario, and that's what I'm assuming for this. What we would ask the commission to consider is keeping this open, I had a meeting scheduled with the manager for today, but it was postponed till tomorrow, to talk about needed improvements to Kennedy Road, and I think it would benefit everybody for us to have that conversation, and then he can talk to the applicant, and they can try and work something out.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, that completes my questions regarding this application. Peter, do you, does your app, your client have any issue with keeping the public hearing open?
We request it be kept open, so that we can explore with Jeff and with Michelle and with Michael Maniscalco and the commission, maybe you can talk to Barton Stopp and Kevin and our acting secretary. We can discuss these things between now and the next hearing, which I expect would be on the 28th, because we expect both these hearings to be continued. Project of this magnitude, we don't expect to be done one night.
Okay.
Ever.
Thank you. Okay, so, at this point, did you have something?
I had a question.
Oh, please, Christopher Bernstein.
This is probably more for staff, so there's been representations that the developer is willing to cede some of the acreage to the town, and I'm curious what the upsides and downsides of the town taking it are versus not taking it.
Well, I'll start and Michelle can finish. So, we would have those pieces of property for town use, such as for the cul-de-sac. I don't know that the town would ever extend this road beyond this point, it wouldn't serve any purpose per se. It might provide access to the railroad if there was ever a future need for access to the railroad, that's a big question, but the possibility exists that that would happen. I don't think the town would ever develop it, certainly if it was left in conservation easement, we would be limited to what we could do with that property. See what? Go ahead.
No, I agree with what Jeff said, I think, you know, with the scenario, if the developer wasn't going to do that, we had the issue of the right-of-way and what would happen with that in the future, and if the town would abandon it, the town would have no ownership anymore up there. I think since it is conservation land and it is area to remain untouched, that it doesn't hurt us to have it under town ownership, and like Jeff said, I mean, who knows in 50 years from now if we'll need to get to the railroad for some reason, and this way, we won't have a lost access point to it. So that's why that 10-foot strip, to me, is kind of important that we get if, you know, we're going to take the land as well as the acreage on the east side.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, is there anything else you'd like to address on this application tonight as far as the re-subdivision? Hearing and seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to continue the public hearing to our second meeting in June.
Motion to continue this public hearing.
I second it.
Okay, we have motion as second. All those in favor of the continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is unanimous without Kevin Foley voting on this, so. We just voted on continuing with 6-0. Okay, so, we'll go to our next public hearing, which is application 22-18P, Skanel Properties.
Thank you, Ben. That was fun. Now for the big one. So now, as you know, the commission, its own volition, decided to go to public hearing on this application for a site plan for those four parcels as of right now that we discussed in the first hearing. The 352 Sullivan Avenue, 67 Kennedy Road, 68 Kennedy Road, and that 10-foot strip that doesn't have an assigned address from the assessor's office or the GIS. So we are, I'd like just to reintroduce the team, go through that just for one minute, if I may, so, and I won't point to them, because you're all, we're here for that. So our architect is Louis Vanderlue, and he's from GMA, flew in from St. Louis, and our legal advisor is attorney Tom Cody of Robinson Cole. Ben Wheeler is here, in his capacity as director of landscape architecture for Design Professionals. Our civil engineer is Daniel Jameson, our project manager from Design Professionals. Dean Gustafson is our senior wetland scientist from All Points Technology in Waterford, and he's here for the overall, if you want to hear about it. Wetlands Commission was thrilled, so. And also Christopher McLean, right next to Louis, and he's from Langdon in New Haven, he'll be addressing the traffic issues associated with it, his findings and recommendations. So this is, again, a site plan application, is not a special exception application, we're only going to hearing at the decision of the commission. Subdivision regulations do not apply to this particular application. I'm going to, so what we have right now up on the screen, and you have handouts which have it, I know Stephanie has it, Commissioner Dexter has it, yes, that first one we're showing now, and that is an overall with a color site plan as well as the area around it, and I will, I will in a minute get into the area around it, but first of all, I want to just talk to you about, because I came up with the last application with a related use, we want to just address that. This is an application for a warehouse and distribution center, it's not a trucking and freight terminal. The building is designed for that purpose and only that purpose. Loading docks are only on one side of the building, that's the west side, in the back of the building, away from Kennedy Road. There'll be no cross docks, which are typical of a higher-volume transshipment-type facility such as a trucking or freight terminal. The building is designed for internal racking systems, so you can go up with lots of storage capacity, that's what warehouses, distribution centers are supposed to have, and it's not for a common carrier operation such as what you might see around town on Sullivan Avenue, for example, and off of Route 5. Planning and zoning commission previously approved all of Skanel's prior developments as warehouses and distribution centers, all five of them, and I'll get into those in a minute. And a change of use to a transshipment-type facility such as a trucking terminal or freight terminal would require express approval from this commission, in our opinion. So the five Skanel developments, some of you were on the commission for, some were not, I'll review those. Right down the street, as you're approaching toward, going westbound toward Route 5, on the left-hand side, is the Hyundai parts distribution center, also known as their Mobis Division, which covers the northeastern US from our facility in South Windsor, and they are a major international corporation, which Skanel brought to South Windsor. And they also bought enough land for that and had extra land, and they also were able to attract Performance Food Group's Vistaar Building, which is a food warehouse including cold storage, so that's there, right next door to that, basically at the, close to the intersection of Route 5 and Sullivan Avenue. Then, they subsequently built in order, they built the Coca-Cola facility, which allowed East Hartford to expand their manufacturing operations, and they moved their sales center, which is a large office building component in the front, and they also were able to relocate their distribution center from East Hartford, again, so they could increase capacity, so we could keep it here in the Hartford area, all the production and distribution, as opposed going up into Boston area. So that was good for the economy here, preserved and added jobs in East Hartford and also a lot in South Windsor. Then across the street from that, the Home Depot's Regional Distribution Center, not a store, but the Home Depot's Regional Distribution Center, and that is with rail access, taking advantage of the rail that we just discussed in the prior application, that same rail line. So the Home Depot came in, much larger facility than So, the Home Depot came in, much larger facility than Coca-Cola, in fact, probably about twice the size. And that's up and operating. And then, a spec building that Skennell built, not knowing who the tenant was. In fact, they thought it was going to be for multiple tenants, at 240 Ellington Road, right adjacent to, right on, all on Route 30, adjacent to I-291. And ended up being, the entire building was leased long-term by Amazon. And then they came back to you, I don't think we're involved in that at all, but they came back to your, to you, consultants for Amazon, to modify it so they could drive into the building and other relatively minor modifications to meet the needs of Amazon. So, those are the five developments that Skennell has done, all of which have major tenants that they brought to South Windsor, major economic development projects for the town. And without that, you would not have the revenue, the building permit fees, personal property, and of course, the ongoing addition to the grand list for that 1.26 million square feet of space that Skennell has built so far in this community. With a proposed building at, we're calling it 67 Kennedy Road, just to simplify it. 67 Kennedy Road, this new site, whether it's on 17 acres or just under 20 acres, I think it'll, I suspect it'll end up being around 17 acres. That will have brought six economic development projects to South Windsor, all with national tenants and, although we don't know who the tenant is now for this. And it will exceed 1.5 million square feet in floor area, having brought that to the community. So, the relationship with Skennell and, and the town has been really good. And Skennell likes the town of South Windsor and has had a really good track record. And, and we've tried to broaden our tax base in this town, and that's why we have our industrial zone property, and they've been a major part of that. As I mentioned, tenants are not known yet, typical. You don't, usually know who's coming in, they do not have anyone at this time. They don't do that typically until they know when they can deliver a building. They've gone through the approval process and what they can offer to a tenant. And see who's out there at the time. Because until you know when you can deliver that, why waste your time, their time, and your time until you can get going and get serious negotiations? So, they, they don't, do not have a tenant at this time, and they are not serious with any tenant at this time. That's not required for site plan application, identify a tenant. In fact, typically, I think maybe with Hyundai and Mobis, we identified them. I'm pretty sure we did. It's not right here right now, but I, I think.
I don't think so.
You don't think so, till the very end? We didn't? Okay.
No.
Although rumors are flying in for some of these, because of some outreach efforts by other third parties. But, but we typically do not reveal that, our client does not reveal that, and for obvious reasons. So, it's not required for site plan application to reveal them, and we're not. And the previous applications were approved without tenant identification, if indeed that thing with Mobis is correct. So now, I just want to review some area uses. There's some, up here, some slideshows, slides, you should have those in your package. We've got views of surrounding building stuff. So, at 40 Kennedy Road, it also is a Sullivan Avenue dress, address, but so that everybody goes to and from via Kennedy Road, is the FedEx facility, much larger, much larger parcel, much larger building, much more activity than we would ever have on our site, much smaller site. Also, yeah, that's right there, that, that 60-acre site, Charbonneau sold to them. And then, also, Woodcock Refrigeration is just at the beginning, which really looks small right now, considering these other bigger buildings around there. And then there are other couple of buildings just in north of the access drive to FedEx. If you could point out that access drive to FedEx, please. Thank you. Oh, there you are, right behind me. Okay. Wonder where he went? So, Ben's doing the optics. So, so we have two buildings on the east side, just to the north. I know it was a multiple-acumen building just in north of the FedEx Drive, and then there's another building to the north, and I'm not sure who occupies that, but small buildings. And also, other uses in the general area. So, there's, yeah, there's a picture of the FedEx building, lower-left corner. Can we pan out a little bit so we can, there we go. And along Sullivan Avenue, there are lots of buildings, the, what was known as Park Site, we did that project across the street. And then, 425 Sullivan Avenue is just to the left, which is a manufacturing enterprise, metal manufacturing, aerospace-type things. And then, what else? Other smaller buildings, there's Rex Lumber off to the east, Jay's Landscaping to the east. There's a truck terminal, I guess you call it a truck terminal, conventional terminal, to the east of FedEx. And then there's some, some other buildings, there's another truck terminal till, Charbonneau has a building, north-south building, north-south access, multiple-tenant building. And then to east of that is the, is it RS? Is he calling himself RS? R&amp;L, excuse me, R&amp;L. Yeah, R&amp;L Carriers is the growing enterprise there. I know they bought from Dave Karen, the site to the east of them, not too distant past. So, that's the general nature of it. It's industrial, and you see in the upper-left corner is also the Aldi facility on the other side of Rice Street. So, there are a lot of industrial buildings, it's industrial area, it's not a residential area. The only real residence I can think of in the area is on our property at 352 Sullivan Avenue, and that's that beautiful deteriorating home there that's, to my understanding, is unoccupied, and hopefully will be gone in the near term. It's an eyesore. Okay, now I'd like to just go to the site plan. If we can go over to that. Here we go, the colored rendering. And I'll review some of the features of the site. We're proposing a 241,800-square-foot warehouse distribution center building. It has, on the, in the dark red color, to the west side of it is 59 trailer spaces to the far west area, part of the truck court there. That's the only area we're proposing trailer spaces, so 59 total at this time. On the east side of the building, there are three entrances to the building. One at the southeast corner, one northeast corner, one in the middle. And all along the east side of the building, in landscaping, there will be parking, which is 142 parking spaces for the employees and guests, and vendors who may come in, visiting the facility. To the far west side, in blue, is the only detention basin we're proposing for this facility, to the west of the trailer court. And we also have, in, I believe it's going to be in the northeast corner, but Louis can address that. We're going to have 6,000 square feet of office space and office component. And we have proposed 130 reserved spaces, although we're modifying that, the location, because some of them were off of the access drive, main access drive to the rear, for the trucks. We're going to take those and put them over in the trailer area. So, we have a total, we'll be showing next time, we'll show a total of 272 car spaces. 271 are required. There's no way that we're going to be needing those reserved spaces, but we're required to show them because your regulations require it. These facilities do not require that much parking. So, we have no expectation that the parking will be built beyond the 142 that are required, that we show, depict on our site plan. Impervious coverage is 54.6%. And as Michelle indicated, that'll change if we go down to a roughly 17-acre site. We've checked that, we'll be okay. We'll still meet the standard 65% for industrial zone. If we remove the 68 Kennedy Road and the 10-foot strip, both of those will be fine if you remove the 2.48 acres, I believe, from the site. So, we'll drop down to roughly 17 acres. And lot coverage right now, before we take those parcels out, is 28.8%, so there'll be no problem whatsoever. That's building coverage. We are proposing, I see Mr. Wagner's not here. We're proposing 15 electric vehicle charging stations, in accordance with your new regulations, five of which will be installed and active, and our narrative discusses that in further detail. We might want to wait till Mr. Wagner's here to get into further detail. The, the, Mr. Doolittle, town engineer, has recommended, in his, in his memos, that we remove, we propose, as you see in the southwest corner of the site, energy savings. The trucks are going to the west. Why should they have to go up and around the building and then all the way down Kennedy Road, go up through the light? We're proposing that they just go out from a new egress driveway, so they go westbound. But town engineer has recommended against that. We've either reconfiguration or removal of that. And we do not have a plan with us tonight, but we will for the next hearing. And we're going to sit down, and we sit down with town staff, based on their availability. And we, we appreciate that, we'd like to discuss the options for that. We do not think that a reconfigured access drive, where you're actually going perpendicular to the street, makes sense, because we, OSTO will require that our trucks come out and not, not go into opposing lanes and stay in the lane and all that stuff, and we'll end up with a, with a challenging situation, say the least. We don't think that works. So, we're, we're probably going to just eliminate that access. The only other factor is whether or not fire marshal or others think that we need to have an emergency vehicle access drive out to Sullivan Avenue. So, we may have to have something there which will affect our landscaping, ambitious landscaping treatment that we have along the frontage. We'd like to keep that intact as much as we can, but we'll see what happens with the fire marshal, Walt Summers, or whoever's taking deputies, addressing that. So, it was really to save time and save energy for the vehicles going to the westbound as they're egressing from our truck court. So, now there'll be, 100% of them will be going out to the intersection of Kennedy Road and Sullivan Avenue. We believe, oh, and if we do, if we do that, if we end up with some kind of turnaround at the end of our truck court, so vehicles can come down there and still get around readily, we'll probably end up losing some trailer spaces, most likely. The building has, currently has, we have proposed initially 25 loading docks along the west side of the building. Those 25 loading docks also have what are called knockout panels. So, we could increase that by 20 if the market is such that tenants, prospective tenants wants additional ones. We don't know if they'd want the full 20, or if they want any of them. But the building is designed to have knockouts, so you could have additional, up to 20 additional loading docks. So, go from 25 up to a maximum of 45. So, it is a possibility that we do that, based on the design. Also, at the northerly end and the southerly end of the loading dock court, we have the two drive-in doors, which are meant for a number of reasons, so that a vehicle, it could be anything from a maintenance truck to a forklift, to people servicing the building, also for trash. The trash is expected to be inside the building. And they're not, by the way, these are not designed for tractor-trailers. There will not be tractor-trailers entering the building from these ramps, the northerly and southerly end of the loading court. And, so that's the purpose of those two entrances to the building, for vehicles. There is, as I mentioned in the first hearing, there's four acres of conservation land. It's an ambitious conservation component, and if you have time tonight, it's only 8:15. I think it'd be, for who to listen to Dean Gustafson, what we're proposing in northern end of the site and how it ties into other natural areas around here, I think you should be enlightened about that. He's got a lot of expertise, and I know the inland wetlands agency was delighted what we ended up with in the end, after working with town staff and our design team and the commission. And we, as I indicated, just one detention basin on the west side. We are asking for, it's in more detail what we're asking for, separate documents, but a site lighting height waiver, as you've granted for, I believe, all of the prior five Skennell projects in this town and most others. Requests from 25 feet to 35 feet in the truck court area, and this is primarily for safety. So, we've even distribution of light, and it's fewer light poles for standards for somebody to hit throughout the development, is much safer environment, and there's no residential around here to impact any one. And we, of course, will be dark-skies compliant, full cutoff fixtures as well. They only point down, they don't point out off the site, and we'll meet all those standards. So, as you have done in the past, we're requesting that. It saves on some luminaires and more even distribution, and it's a, primarily a safety factor and for the people driving the trucks and in the, in the area back there. So, we're hopeful that you will consider that, entertain that. With respect to discussion and requests for sidewalks on Sullivan Avenue that I believe Jeff and Michelle had requested, and, I think, just a couple of considerations that they, that... We'll, we'll, we actually want to see what happens through this process with the commission and staff, where we're at in terms of additional improvements, before we agree to something like that. We want to see the order of magnitude. If the, if the improvements are prohibitive, the project will not support that level of involvement for off-site improvements. We'll consider that sidewalk improvements to Kennedy Road, cul-de-sac, what have you. If it, if it, if it blows the budget and we can't, it can't justify the project, then, of course, we can't go forward with it. But we'll, we'll look at what happens, and there'll be some discussions over the next two weeks with town staff and perhaps with some commissioners through town staff. So, hopefully, we'll take a look at that. And, and I, by the way, were the standards, Michelle, were the standards the same when FedEx came in with respect to the planned conservation development for the sidewalks? I'm just curious.
I think that goes back to like '06 FedEx.
And when was it?
And, you know, we're in a 14 is the most recent plan, so I mean, we're probably two plans ago.
Okay, so, we don't know.
We'd have to look.
But, they weren't required to do it, so please take in consideration when you're looking at the overall package. They have extensive frontage, they weren't required to do it. We have frontage. Are we going to be required to do it? But look at the overall pack, picture in terms of all, all the overall improvements that you're looking for. So, we'd like to, I'd like to turn it over to Daniel Jameson, who will discuss the engineering aspects of the site plan.
Hello, again, members of the commission. Once again, for the record, Daniel Jameson, professional engineer in state of Connecticut, and project manager at Design Professionals. As Peter mentioned, I'm here to talk about the stormwater design for the industrial facility here. We, in evaluating the existing surface, we did, are determined that there are four existing design points. The first one, five, thank you, Ben. The first one being 18-inch metal pipe that currently conveys stormwater underneath the railroad and on, to the north. The second being the sheet flow that would leave this northwestern corner of the property. And then, we can start to convey west along the railroad. There's a high point where the water decides to go west and east in this location. Third, water from the southern half of the site, there's a drainage divide in between these two wetland pockets, where water from north of that drainage divide would enter this wetland pocket, pool up, and then ultimately make it into the stormwater collection system for Sullivan Ave. And then there's a small portion on this north, I'm sorry, southeastern corner of the property that does flow over into the Kennedy Road catchment system. To provide detention and water quality for the proposed impervious surfaces and building, we are proposing four stormwater detention systems. Five of them will be underground. There is going to be a long stretch of underground chambers positioned along the eastern side of the building to capture runoff from the eastern employee parking area. There's an additional, the second underground detention system will be in this grass area here to collect runoff from yard drains proposed in that area. We are not going to be sending any of our sites runoff into the Kennedy Road drainage system from, on this, to the Kennedy Road drainage system. Apart from what will exit this underground chamber system at a detained rate to match what would leave our site to enter the Kennedy Road drainage system at this southwestern cor, eastern corner of the site. The second or the third underground detention system will be along Sullivan Ave, along the Sullivan Ave side of the berm. The fourth will be in between the berm and the building. Those two systems will tie into a proposed outlet control structure that will convey stormwater into an existing catch basin to remain in Sullivan Ave. The fifth, a large detention system proposed on the west side of the building will work along with the surface basin proposed west of the trailer parking area, combined to provide detention of that area. All runoff from this trailer, or the trailer parking area will sheet flow, and then paved leak-offs are provided to provide, to send that... leak-offs are provided to provide, to send that surface runoff to the water quality basin on the west side. And then the water quality basin will detain that, send the water to the underground system, which will also accept runoff from the full roof area. The final outlet for this underground detention system is a large outlet control structure that will be provided with the, or fitted with the splitter, or two outlets, one that will send water to a proposed wetland mitigation area. As Peter mentioned, we removed the northern basin, there was an original basin here that we removed to provide additional mitigation. We are going to send a pipe that will be dedicated to providing hydration here where water will be allowed to pool and then spill over ultimately to make it to the final outlet point, this original eighteen-inch metal pipe. An additional smaller low flow or low storm orifice at the bottom of the outlet control structure will convey stormwater to the eighteen-inch pipe for lower storm events. But still, we expect even in a two-year storm event that the wetland mitigation area will get some hydration. There was a comment on the outlet control structure from town engineer Jeff Doolittle and I did, to provide a second tie flow measure that will allow water to, in addition to the small orifice at the bottom of the outlet control structure to be conveyed to the eighteen-inch metal pipe, I did a quick run on that and I feel that that, the analysis showed that that wouldn't be a problem and we would still be able to maintain peak flows to below their existing condition. For water quality, all five underground chamber systems were sized or will be installed with isolation rows. Number of, the number of chambers in each row was selected based off the water quality flow calculation as recommended in the two thousand and four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. The large surface basin on the west side was sized with more than a hundred percent of the water quality volume for the trailer parking area that will discharge to it. For E N S measures, we will be securing the perimeter of the site with silt fence and there are a series of divergent swells that are also proposed to convey stormwater to temporary sediment basin that will be this western basin here. And then in another comment from town engineer Jeff Doolittle, we did hear his concern of the definite necessity or need of this eighteen-inch pipe and how important it is to our site's ability to discharge stormwater from the site and how we will be utilizing that as our ultimate discharge for the majority of the stormwater leaving the site. And the property owner Daniel Magical has reached out to the owner of this rail. We haven't heard back from them yet, but he is reaching out to discuss securing appropriate drainage rights and just the ability to inspect it and make the determination if any modifications are needed. With that, that wraps up my presentation. Peter?
Thank you, Daniel. Chris McLean from Langen would like to deliver the traffic report.
Good evening. My name is Christopher McLean. I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. I work for Langen Engineering out of New Haven and I will be discussing the traffic report that we prepared for the project. So, just to give you a little bit of background and to kind of continue on with what Peter was saying, so the site is proposed to be a warehouse, two hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred square feet approximately with a hundred and forty-two auto parking spaces, fifty-two trailer spaces and twenty-five loading docks. Note that the loading docks are only on one side of the building. That is typical of a single load type of facility where storage of materials is the primary use of the facility. Note, as Peter said, this is not proposed to be a truck terminal or anything of that nature. So, speaking more about site access and the way that the site has been designed, there's three primary access points, all of which are on Kennedy Road. We have the three on the east side of the property, all connecting to Kennedy Road. The northernmost one is, has been designed to accommodate the entering and exiting of all the, of all the trucks for the facility. And as Peter mentioned, there, there's the potential for the southwest corner for an exit-only, right-turn-only, truck-only exit driveway. However, that's still being discussed and DPI will be looking at a truck turnaround in that, in that location for the next meeting. As part of the, the traffic study itself, we, we analyzed four main intersections on Sullivan Ave as part of the study. Furthest to the west, we have the Route Five and Route One-Ninety-four Sullivan Ave intersection. We have Sullivan Ave and Ry Street, Sullivan and Kennedy, which is the primary intersection for the site. And then furthest to the east, we have Sullivan and Ayers Road. We think that these are the four most primary intersections as relates to the proposed development and the one, and the intersections that the, that the majority of the traffic being generated by the site is going to be using, therefore, the most impactful. So, as, and just before I continue, I just want to note that the Office of State Traffic Administration, O S T A, we've submitted to them the traffic study for their review and they've approved the traffic study methodology and trip generation rates that I'll be getting into in just a minute. So, speaking about trip generation rates, we use the I T E, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, Trip Generation Manual Eleventh Edition, which is the latest edition. We selected the Warehouse Land Use Code, one, number one fifty. That one is the most applicable to this particular development. There are a few industrial land use codes that we could have selected, all of which are either very narrowly scoped or outside the scope of this proposed development. Warehousing as a land use code is a very, it's been in existence in the I T E Trip Generation Manual for quite some time. There's a long backup of traffic data that the I T E has collected over the years and we feel that this has, it's, it's inclusive of this development and it's the most applicable land use code to use. As such, we ran the, the trip generation rates using square footage. So, based on square footage, we're expecting fifty-three total trips in the morning peak hour, fifty-five total trips in the P M. peak hour and four hundred and twenty total trips over the course of the day. That's two-ten in and two-ten out. Just to give you a little bit more information, as this will be serving trucks, the I T E Trip Generation Manual also has information related to the truck trip generation for development of this size and based on that, we'd be looking at seven, seven truck trips in the morning peak hour, ten in the evening peak hour and one hundred and thirty-eight truck trips in the evening. That's sixty-nine in and sixty-nine out.
Could you repeat that number, please?
I'm sorry. One hundred and thirty-eight total, which is, accounts for in plus out, so sixty-nine in, sixty-nine in and sixty-nine out.
Through the whole day?
That is the entire day. And the four hundred and twenty that I mentioned before as part of the total, that includes trucks, just to clarify. So, based on the, the trip generation rates that we used, the existing traffic data that we collected in early twenty-twenty-two in support of this project, we went and we did turning movement counts at each of these four intersections. We developed existing traffic volumes. We distributed these, we distributed the proposed development volumes over these four intersections and we analyzed the existing background and build conditions in a, in a computer model called Synchro, which, which generates levels of service, volume to capacity ratios and queue lengths based on the Highway Capacity Model Manual, the latest edition. Using, based on this information, we, we found that there would be no change in the level of service at any of these intersections or any of the movements related to these intersections based on the, the proposed volume of vehicles that we'd be expecting and that there would be no, no significant change to the queue length involved at any of these intersections as well. So, based on the, the fifty-three trips in the morning, the fifty-five in the evening, we've, we've found that there'd be no change in the overall level of service for any of these intersections. So, with that being said, you know, we looked at the existing background and, and build volumes, we looked at the trip generation rates, but the one thing that we, we wanted to study was we wanted to, in addition to all that, we wanted to look at whether the intersection of Sullivan Ave and Kennedy Road would require a traffic signal. It is a state road, it's under state regulations and the state would be looking at whether or not it would warrant a traffic signal. So, we did A D T counts, which is a twenty-four-hour count during a weekday in twenty-twenty-two to estimate the existing volume of traffic over the course of the day, broken up by hour. And we found that under existing conditions with just the FedEx north of the site, or north of Sullivan Ave, that the, the volumes would, would meet an eight-hour traffic signal warrant. Typically, the Connecticut State D O T, they would like to see an eight-hour warrant, which means that the traffic volumes over the course of eight hours over an entire day would, are high, are up to a high enough threshold that they, that it would require, you know, something above and beyond a, a simple stop sign or, or something of that nature. So, the, this intersection under existing conditions meets the traffic signal warrants that the Connecticut State D O T would, would typically like to see to install a traffic light. So, with the added traffic of our development, we would be further increasing the need for a, a traffic signal at this location. The, and as I stated before, the Office of State Traffic Administration, they've reviewed and approved the, the traffic study methodology here and they will continue to weigh in and, and let us know whether a traffic signal, they would, whether they would be requiring us to install one. However, the, the project is amenable to installing one at, at the, at Skennell's own, they would be paying for a traffic signal if it was, if it was warranted here regardless of whether or not it was required under existing conditions. We're, we're going to continue to work with the state D O T as their findings. We've submitted what's called Step One and we've gotten their approval and we're looking to submit Step Two, which is the, which is findings and off-site mitigation required in the near future as this project progresses. With that, I will, that concludes my, the, the discussion on the traffic report. I'd be happy to answer any questions after our presentation's concluded. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes, yes. One thing I just wanted to mention, so in accordance with the, with, in order to provide easy access management for Sullivan Ave, I'm just going to flip to the site plan here. The Skennell is proposing to provide an access easement over the southwest corner of Sullivan Ave and the three-thirty Sullivan Ave parcel over here. Skennell is going to provide an access easement in favor of three-thirty Sullivan Ave in order to, in order for any future connection that three-thirty Sullivan may have to Sullivan in order to directly be across from the intersection of Schwaier Road and Sullivan. That would create a four-way intersection rather than the potential for a, you know, another driveway on Sullivan Ave if it was proposed in the future. Right now, it's a, I believe it's like a car storage area or dealership, something of that nature. There's, as far as I'm concerned, there, there's no proposed anything going on there. But in the future, this access easement would, would give them the right to, to have a driveway over the southwest corner of this property to create a four-way intersection here to provide easier access management for the entirety of Sullivan Ave. And it, that's, that concludes my portion. Thanks.
Peter, do you have any type of drawing or that would give the commission its information on that easement, like a potential? It's on the plan, we can show it to you if you'd like. Okay, thank you. Next to Ben Wheeler, who could show that to you if you'd like, we'll be reviewing the landscape architectural elements as well as site lighting.
Thank you, Peter. For the record, Ben Wheeler, licensed landscape architect in the state of Connecticut, Director of Operations in Landscape Architecture with Design Professionals. I just want to go over briefly with you the, the landscape and, and lighting plans for this project. Starting along Sullivan Avenue, we are proposing extensive landscaping along Sullivan Avenue.
Excuse me, Ben, what plan are you on?
This is on.
Plan number?
C D S L S one.
Did you, okay, I got it. About five or six from the end. Thank you.
Sure. So, we are providing extensive landscaping along Sullivan Avenue in between the, the proposed building and Sullivan Avenue. Even though buffer regulations do not apply along street frontages, that landscaping includes a, a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees and also some flowering trees. And it's a planting plan that's very similar to the, the Skennell Development west of here on Sullivan Avenue for the Mobus and Vistaar Buildings. There is also some berming in that area, some, some grading to provide as much screening of the building as, as possible through there. So, the grade rises up from Sullivan Avenue and then drops down to the, the building elevation. So, all that landscaping will, will set up on a, a small berm through, through that area. Along the east side of the site, along Kennedy Road, we are proposing a, a series of street trees, a, a mix of honey locust and zelkova trees to enhance the landscape along Kennedy Road. And then adjacent to that, in the auto parking area, another mix of deciduous trees and flowering trees throughout that area in order to meet the zoning requirements of at least one tree for every ten auto parking spaces in that area. In addition to that, the auto parking area is meeting the zoning regulations, providing enough interior landscaping, ten percent is required and we are providing just over that with the landscape islands that are, are throughout that area. And then each of the three building entrances that have been mentioned, again, one at the southern end of the site on the east side of the building, one in the middle and then one at the northern end, each of those entrances will be highlighted with a, a mix of deciduous shrubs, flowering shrubs and perennials. Looking at the north end of the site, where the wetlands mitigation is proposed, this plan is, actually, I apologize, this is a, an outdated plan, this is when the detention basin was, was there, but that entire area has now subsequently been converted over to wetlands mitigation with our discussions with the Inland Wetlands Agency. That area will be seeded with a wetland seed mix that is adaptable to fluctuating water levels throughout all different parts of the year. A lot of those plants provide nectar for pollinators that they certainly love, which is great for the, the ecosystem and a mix of forbs and grasses that all provide food and cover for other types of wildlife. In those areas, we worked very closely with Dean Gustafson and All Points Technology to come up with a plant- come up with a planting plan, landscape plan, that included a mix of smaller deciduous trees and native shrubs to help promote the reforestation of that area as, as time goes by, to try and recreate the wetlands that historically were there, that were, were disturbed with the development of Kennedy Road and the adjacent refrigeration building. The surface detention basin along the west side of the truck court area will be ringed with a pond bench that consists of wetlands plantings to provide additional food and cover for wildlife, and they also aid in the treatment of the water quality for the stormwater that is running off the truck court and filtering into that water quality basin as Mr. Jamison had mentioned. The banks of those basins will be seeded with a retention basin wildlife mix, once again, providing additional food and cover for wildlife and some additional pollinator plants for, for the butterflies and, and other pollinators that, that like those types of plants. That seed mix continues along the northern portion of the truck access drive, and then in the area between the mitigation and, and the, the railroad as well. Along the western property line, there are groups of evergreen trees to provide additional cover and habitat for wildlife, and it's especially important being adjacent to the water quality basin. Now, if you turn to the, the next sheet in the site plans, the lighting plans, CDS LT1 and CDS LT2, shows the proposed site lighting for this facility. Utilizes the D-series fixture from Lithonia Lighting, which is a high efficiency, high efficiency LED lighting fixture. And this is a commonly used fixture that we've utilized on a lot of similar projects throughout South Windsor. They are full cutoff lights, as Mr. DiMali has mentioned, and as required in the zoning regulations. There are pole-mounted lights at each of the three vehicular entrances along Kennedy Road to provide for the safe ingress and egress of those vehicles. And also on the, on the east side of the building, there are building-mounted lights at twenty-five feet tall, as allowed in the regulations, to illuminate the, the auto parking area. Those building-mounted lights continue around the north side of the building, again, at twenty-five feet tall, to illuminate the truck access drive. And then over on the west side of the building, more building-mounted lights over the loading docks, and, and also additional pole lights west of the trailer parking spaces. And as Mr. DiMali had mentioned, we are, the applicant is requesting a waiver to allow those lights on the building and on the poles in the truck court area to be installed at, at thirty-five feet high, to provide more even light distribution in that area and increase There are no building-mounted lights proposed on the south side of the building facing Sullivan Avenue, other than the small lights that will be required for the emergency egress doors that are on that side of the building that are required according to building code. We did go before the Architectural Design Review Committee and received a favorable review. The only comment that they did want to see, and we'll address that in subsequent site plans, was they did want some of the landscaping near the southeast corner of the site, near the, the Kennedy Road and Sullivan Avenue intersection adjusted, because what they felt was a, a nice-looking building, over time, would be hidden with that landscaping, so they wanted that adjusted to either different types of landscaping or moved to make sure that the, the nice-looking, especially that corner of the building, is not hidden from Now, to give a little more perspective as to what this will look like, Skanel hired a, a person to do a computer-generated rendering, and this gives an indication of what the building looks like that Louis will talk about here in, in a minute, but also what the landscaping will look like. And this perspective is approximation of what the landscaping will look like when, at day one when the facility opens. So, this is at the southeast corner of the site. This is Kennedy Road here, Sullivan Avenue, crossing the, the front of the picture, looking up towards the building, and again, an approximation of what the landscaping will, will look like day one at installation. And then, if you project that out roughly of what it will look like after ten years of growth, which subsequently, you know, just for reference purposes, that's roughly about how much time the, the landscaping along Mobus and Vistaar has been installed. And you can see this is a, a representation of what the, the landscaping would look like after ten years. Providing a lot of screening for the building, again, the ADRC felt a little bit too much screening in this corner, so we'll make adjustments to make sure that this building facade, this nice treatment in the corner, will be visible, especially to westbound traffic on Sullivan Avenue. Taking another perspective look, this is at the southwest corner of the site, where the original truck egress drive was proposed. As previously mentioned, you know, we'll work with town staff on, on revising that and possibly eliminating that. Again, an indication of what the landscaping will look like day one when the facility opens. A significant berm at the southwest corner of the site to help screen the, the truck court and the loading dock area, the berm continuing on the other side of this access drive, and there's the indication of the extensive landscaping that, that I had mentioned. And again, a, a representation of, you know, what that will look like approximately after ten years of, of growth. And with that, I am certainly available for any questions, but I will turn it over to, back over to Mr. DiMali.
Okay, Mr. Louis Vandalut, who's here from St. Louis, would like to discuss the architectural aspects from, he's from GMA Architects.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Louis Vandalut, I'm a licensed architect here in Connecticut and based at St. Louis with GMA Architects. The plan you see on screen here, probably the next one in your packet, we'll walk through it first briefly. This is a floor plan of the building, kind of showing what the comm grids look like on the inside. Mr. DiMali mentioned the comment about offices in the corners. What we are providing is, is small office bumpouts in each of these corners. One of these may be built day one, one may be set, you know, as a spec, and the other left open for a future tenant, which is typical for this kind of building. Also, in the centerpiece here, you'll see a couple of doors, and it's a little easier to see in the elevation for a potential third tenant. So, this building could be divided in two, it could be divided in three, or you could have a single tenant take the entire building. On the back sides, we've noted before, dock doors coming across the back, all these doors will not be in day one. We have a certain number of doors planned for day one for immediate occupancy of the building, and then provide knockout panels across the back for, for future need or future flexibility as tenant, as a tenant may come or go or have a different needs as they come into it. The only other thing to note is back here in the back, we have a, a small room located on the dock wall here, that is our fire pump and electrical room, where the, the main sprinkler system's in and the main electrical system comes in. One thing I will note, because it's easier to see here on the plan, if I can get myself down there. As we get to the elevations, and probably made note, as, as you guys may have seen in the perspective that Ben was showing, is one of the things we do with articulations here in the corners at the office entries, we try to give a little relief to the panels. The buildings are a, a painted concrete panel, similar to what Skanel has done to the rest of the, the rest of the four or five projects here in South Windsor. It's, it's similar quality or better quality than what we've been doing in the past up here, as, as they've kind of evolved in the market over time. We have a recessed panel here, so it's not just a full flat facade, so these, this panel steps back a couple of feet, steps back out a couple of feet to kind of create a nice wayfinding feature to the elevations. Step back out here, bear with me just a second. Sorry, I might use using Adobe, so I apologize. The office corners, as we mentioned before, this is the typical office corner up here, blown up on screen, it'll be a little easier to see. Two-story glass in the corner itself, differentiation in the concrete panels, differentiation in the reveal patterns and the colors. Again, create that wayfinding feature here on the corner, and then as you go towards the center of the building, do the same wayfinding feature at the center of the building. So, the, the entrances become very well-defined on, on the building. One of our concerns always is, you know, between those entries, having a large expanse of concrete, you know, this just paints, but doesn't have a big mass of building. So, what we do is, we go through and we break up that mass, as you kind of see here at the, it's called the third points, with the difference of color, difference of pattern, difference of paint scheme, to kind of break that building up, and the eye doesn't just get this big one wall, it gets, it starts to break itself apart. And once we do that, with the, the recesses that we put in, both the, the corner entries and again at the front of the building, it, it gives a nice little shadow lines as we walk ourselves across it. North and south elevations, this will be facing Sullivan and then facing, this will be facing north, facing the railroad, we do a similar treatment to it. We have in recesses at the front entrance, we have the glass at the office, we introduce some clear-story windows, these are high windows, you know, up twenty-five, thirty feet up in the air. Their main purpose is to get light into the building. We found over time, these are really effective for, for people working in the warehouse, because they get, they at least get natural light into the building. It's a lot more effective than a skylight situation, and it's a lot more watertight, performance-based, just does a much better job for us. We then do the same thing, we take the similar paint scheme and structure and, and apply it to the south elevation. Again, as you're driving by on Sullivan Road, you, it breaks up that mass of the wall, so it doesn't just appear to be one large, large mass. The backside of the building with the dock wall, we typically keep it really plain, it's, it's, you can see here some of the dock doors and the knockout panels, and then clear-story windows running essentially every other, every other panel or two per, two per structural bay, again, with the intention of getting light into the face of the building. And then finish, I'll just wrap up with a couple of perspectives. This is an aerial photograph looking through, generated by the same gentleman that did the onsite renderings. You can see here, again, those elevations I talked about, the, the step out in the panels, the adjustments of the top of the walls, and then what that, those, that paint scheme does is it breaks up that entire wall, both on the south elevation and on the east elevation. And I think at this point, then, we'll go with the same slides I think Ben, Ben showed previously. So, with that, happy to answer any questions as we get to that point, and I'll pass it back over to Peter.
So, we can just go into summary unless you would like a little, a short presentation from, oh.
A couple, just Ben Wheeler again, for the, for the record, I do want to add to what Louis had said, because Louis wasn't involved with the projects. The paint scheme here is basically the same paint scheme that was used at the, the Home Depot facility and, and two-forty Ellington Road. The feedback that we got from town staff and architectural review was that that paint scheme was fairly well-received, so Skanel gave GMA the direction to, to duplicate that. Obviously, some slightly different features than those buildings, but at least the paint scheme is similar. We do also have, if you want to turn your attention, the same gentleman that, that generated this view also did a drive-by on Sullivan Avenue, more like a walk-by, unless you're driving at about five miles an hour, but we'll, we'll see if we can, bear with me a second Let me restart. So, this is starting at the west end of the site, if you're traveling eastbound, looking at the facility. So, you know, there, with that exit drive, there was a little bit of break in the berm, as there may be if an emergency access was required, but for the most part, the truck court is screened. There, you can see the indication of the, of the berm and landscaping, breaking up the, the building facade, and then as you get to the east end of the site, turning back and, and looking at the building. Again, providing just a, an indication of, you know, what it'll look like about ten years after, ten years maturity with the plantings. So, with that, I will turn it back over to Mr. DiMali.
It's about nine o'clock, we can summarize, or you could, if you want to have a short presentation by Dean Gustafson, who's here, who's been waiting patiently.
May I ask, what do you think a short presentation time length is?
Five? No more than five minutes.
I think that would be good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Dean Gustafson, I'm a senior wetland scientist with All Points Technology, Waterford, Connecticut. So, we worked with the, the entire design team to avoid impacts to the highest functioning wetlands on the subject property, which are located at the end of the site. Unavoidable wetland impacts were associated with two relatively small, isolated wetlands located towards Sullivan Ave and in the central part of the site. Those were cultivated wetlands back as recent as the nineteen nineties, which resulted in historic agricultural impacts of those limited wetland resources. So, to compensate for the project's unavoidable wetland impacts, we developed a comprehensive and meaningful mitigation plan in concert with Design Professionals, and that consisted of three elements. There is a wetland enhancement area located between two existing wetlands features, and that's this kind of duck head-neck feature. And then we combine that with the wetland creation area that Ben had mentioned earlier. That creation area is about twenty-five thousand square feet, the wetland restoration area is about eighteen thousand square feet. And then we combine, what that'll do is combine the, these new wetland areas with existing wetland resources to enhance the existing wetland functions and values and provide some valuable wildlife habitat, as well as other typical wetland functions and values. And then, to tie it all together, the applicant has proposed a conservation easement that encompasses both the wetland areas, the enhancement area, and the wetland creation area, as well as this area along the east side of, of project site at sixty-eight Kennedy Road, which consists of a relatively mature upland forested habitat, it's a little bit of wetlands at the far north end. But when you combine all of those resources together, you're, you're providing a pretty ecologically significant mitigation package. And that actually, the benefits are not just to the subject property, but it actually extend beyond the subject property. This habitat area has connectivity to nearby open space, particularly to the east, associated with Ry Street Park and Barton Property, and also to the north, northwest, there are Connecticut DEP-owned properties associated with the Scantic River, so we feel is a fairly significant mitigation package that'll benefit the, the town of South Windsor, as well as wildlife usage in the surrounding area. And that concludes my statement. Great, thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Gustafson. Okay, just for a brief summary, we believe we are consistent in compliance with your zoning regulations with respect to the site plan application for a warehouse distribution center at, we're calling it sixty-seven Kennedy Road on the west side. We think it's a, a good design. It, it certainly meets the definition of warehouse and distribution center. It's not a freight terminal, it's not a truck terminal, it's not a transshipment facility. It has plenty of storage, plenty of room for racking systems and the like, and we think it, you know, there's no residential around it. We think it's going to be a, a good-looking facility from Sullivan Avenue and from Kennedy Road. We think it adds to the tax base considerably, in, which is consistent with what you want in your plan of conservation development, and we think it's going to be a great asset for the town and help out with our tax base. So, with that, that concludes our formal remarks, and we expect that you'll continue the hearing, and in the interim, we'd like to be able to meet with town staff, these town staff members here and others. here and others, and also maybe contact through town staff to commissioners, see, particularly the chairman, see what direction to go over the next two weeks with respect to those other items have been, those items have been addressed tonight. Thank you very much. And we're all available for any questions, should there be any further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you. This is a request for a site plan approval for two hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred square foot distribution facility with six thousand square feet of office space on approximately nineteen acres, sixty-seven, sixty-eight Kennedy Road, three fifty-two Sullivan Avenue, industrial zone. As indicated, the intended use is a warehouse space for distribution facility. There's no known tenant at this time. The applicant is not proposing any outdoor storage with this application. Maximum purview coverage, again, this is based on the plan with all the nineteen acres is shown at fifty-four point six percent. We allow up to sixty-five percent. In the event that four acres, or the two acres is subtracted out, they would still be able to meet the sixty-five percent coverage ratio. Proposed building will be forty feet in height. That's the maximum we allow in the industrial zone. The front yard setback for this building is about fifty-five feet, the closest corner to Sullivan Ave, and about a hundred and fifteen feet from Kennedy Road. And it does, as you see, angle off slightly from Sullivan Ave. Parking requirements are based on employees, as well as the square footage. They indicate two hundred and seventy-one spaces would be required. They're showing a hundred and forty-two spaces. They have shown reserved areas, as Mr. DeMalle mentioned. We would be looking for the, them to be shown in other locations in the access drive. Your regulations prohibit that. And there's also some calculation on the zoning data table I think they need to just fix. They've double-counted some of the spaces, so that's really just a matter of correcting the zoning data table. Our regulations do prohibit the loading docks, which are on the westerly side, from facing public ways, so they do not face public ways. They are screened with the landscaping proposed along Sullivan Ave and along the, the side, the westerly side, so that does meet our requirements related to the location of the loading docks. They are showing the three access drives off of Kennedy Road. The northern one would be the one that would accommodate all the truck traffic. There are no gates or any fencing shown on the property. We've verified with the applicant, there's none planned at this time. There's currently the right drive shown on Sullivan Ave. Staff have questioned that drive. Sounds like we'll be sitting down and discussing that a little bit further over the next couple of weeks. Along the same lines, I think we'd like to have a discussion about the access management easement shown there and whether or not it's the best appropriate location for an access easement. So again, we'll look forward to those discussions, report back on the twenty-eighth related to that. Again, the sidewalk is not shown on this plan. It sounds like we'll be discussing that in the next two weeks. As indicated by the traffic engineer, the traffic study submitted does show that a light is warranted under existing conditions there. As indicated, they are in the OSA process. We did receive a copy on the letter indicating they, they did approve the methodology and the numbers, and they're on to their phase two of it. Our police department does get conferred along the ways. I know Lieutenant Bonaducci has reviewed the traffic report and mentioned to me that the need for light at that location. So again, that will be progressing through the state approvals and we'll report back on that as well. This property is surrounded by industrial property on all sides, so there is no requirement of any buffer requirements. There is quite an aggressive landscaping plan presented tonight with the berming along Sullivan Ave and a lot of perimeter trees and meeting all of our requirements of interior landscaping. A pretty nice landscaping plan presented, I think, for our industrial area. They are requesting a waiver to the lighting at the thirty-five-foot poles. We do have a provision, our regulations, that does allow that after the commission finds that the traffic or other hazards will not be created. In general, property values will be conserved, no effects on existing uses in the area, and the topography of the land makes the property suitable for higher poles. Staff has no objection to the higher poles in this location. As indicated, it was approved on several other of the large distribution facilities, and we haven't received any complaints related to that. So again, we would support that request. You have provided a color elevation. It does show some locations for signage on the building. They would be allowed both building signage and freestanding sign along Kennedy Road out Sullivan Ave intersection. Designer view did review this project on May first, and they were very satisfied with the building as presented. As indicated, the, the one south-eastern corner, discussion of, you know, lessing some landscaping or relocating a little bit, just so that elevation does stay visible as you drive by it. This project did receive Inland Wetlands approval on May eighteenth. They did have a couple of approval conditions I'd like to read in the record. It says if the undeveloped portion of Kennedy Road is abandoned by the town, it shall be protected by a conservation easement and fill-in debris shall be removed. The stormwater management plan should be modified to have more frequent inspections and maintenance schedule should be reviewed by town staff. And they're recommending three bonds, one in the amount of thirty thousand for the erosion sedimentation controls, fifty thousand for the stormwater system, and fifty thousand for proposed wetlands mitigation area. I would also like to just note for the record that the house was shown on the, earlier tonight, that would be subject to our demolition delay ordinance because it is a seventy-five-year or older structure. That, again, just happens as part of the process of construction. That concludes my comments and we'll return on the twenty-eighth with any additional based on revisions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I should just mention, the police and fire will review, we'll probably have them involved in some of the discussions to report back any of their findings as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Dulettle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as was mentioned, I believe the one-way exit driveway from the western part of the site on Sullivan Avenue should be straightened so it's perpendicular to Sullivan Avenue coming, a driveway coming out at an angle like that into a made road is not good design. It encourages cars not to stop. It discourages sightline for the person pulling out to see oncoming traffic. So I believe it needs to be lined up for good traffic design and best safety. I understand that may present a challenge for the trucks to get out. I actually suggested that driveway be moved to the western property line, so it is opposite Schwaire Road. And obviously, there'll be some additional conversations with the applicant and the design team about that driveway. If it's eliminated, that's fine with me also. Some of the reserved parking spaces were shown in the trailer parking spaces, so I asked how that would work with the trailer parking spaces. The southernmost driveway from Kennedy Road onto the site is more than, has a grade of more than eleven percent, which is very steep. I asked if that could be regraded. So it is no more than ten percent slope. The stormwater system is described, the bulk of it is under the western parking lot, and that discharges through an outlet control structure to the eighteen, existing eighteen-inch corrugated metal pipe under railroad tracks. That pipe needs to be inspected and repaired or replaced as needed, so it's in good condition and continues to function. And a right-to-drain needs to be established or updated for the drainage from the site under the railroad tracks into the existing drainage channel and stream on the property on the north side of the railroad tracks, known as two fifty Ry Street. I also, as Daniel mentioned, suggest the alley structure from this stormwater system have a high-level orifice so that in the event the water in the wetlands mitigation areas, full water from the site would flow directly into the pipe going into the railroad tracks. Some of the stormwater pipes need to be checked. The stormwater management system, most of it is underground under the parking areas, so the management plan will need to include frequent inspection of the system because it won't be readily visible to make sure it functions properly. I asked that the landscape plan be checked and adjusted as necessary so there's no large trees or shubs over water lines, particularly those that go to the building from the south side of Kennedy Road and Sullivan Avenue. Asked for truck turning movements for the site plan so we can ensure that trucks have adequate circulation space onto and off of the site. WPCA review and approval is needed for this plan. They typically require a sanitary monitoring manhole at, or in the right-of-way for Kennedy Road for inspection purposes. They would like to know the expected peak and average sanitary flows from this development. And we would like to see the traffic signal considered at the intersection of Sullivan Avenue and Kennedy Road, as was discussed. Those are my comments on this site plan.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we will turn to members of the public. If there is anyone who would like to speak again, if they could come up and put their name and address down on the sign-in sheet. And this is for people in favor of this application. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Okay, hearing none. We'll see about who is against or has questions or concerns. Please step forward. The young lady on the.
Before the clock begins, can I just say how great it is to see you all without your masks on?
Thank you.
Feels good, doesn't it? Okay. My name is Kathy Carrigan, eighteen thirty-eight Main Street. I'm here tonight to talk about sixty-seven Kennedy Road. On April fifth of this year, this commission unanimously approved a one-year moratorium on new warehouse and distribution facility applications, effective April twenty-second. Two days prior to that date, April twentieth, an application was filed for a new warehouse on sixty-seven Kennedy Road. Some facts regarding the application. The project developer is Skennell Properties. It's the company's sixth warehouse distribution center in town. Four contiguous parcels of land were combined or bundled for the project. Nineteen point two acres of wooded land will be cleared for a two hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred square foot warehouse and all the pavement needed for trucks and passenger vehicles. The operation will be twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, with no known tenants, so we must assume full capacity. Plans call for forty-five loading docks, fifty-nine trailer spaces, one hundred and forty-one employee parking places with an additional thirty, one hundred and thirty spaces in reserve. All vehicles will enter on Kennedy Road with a separate, no longer westbound exit. Looks like they'll all enter and exit on that way. The traffic study commissioned and paid for by the developer shows, quote, "a nominal increase in traffic," end quote. Standard wording in all traffic reports prepared for this developer. Notes that the, that also notes that the intersection at Kennedy Road and Sullivan Avenue would warrant a new traffic signal. It conveniently fails to mention the fact that Kennedy Road currently serves as the only entry and exit point for the extremely busy FedEx facility. In the application, no consideration was given to traffic noise or sound barriers. The proposed buffer or visual barrier on the Sullivan Avenue side is an eight-foot berm set back from the road. Was not clear to me, but it looks to be pretty minimal. In comparison, neighboring FedEx berming is easily twelve feet or more, I know because I've climbed over it. It seems clear that this application was submitted on April twentieth specifically to avoid many of the regulation changes being looked at now. To remind the commissioners and to refresh the public, the wording of the moratorium states that the items to be reviewed include, but are not limited to, restrictions on the size of new buildings, restrictions on bundling adjacent properties for developers, enhanced buffers, more stringent visual sound barriers, at visual and sound barriers, a review of traffic and noise standards as they apply to trucks and trucking companies, clear definitions of warehouses, distribution facilities, and freight terminals, traffic and noise studies provided by objective third parties, best practices for noise abatement and reduction. The very zoning regulations that this commission recognizes as problematic and which you've agreed to address and hopefully remediate are all too present in this application. I urge the commissioners to review this application carefully, and, and if you find valid and just reasons to reject it, please do so. Thank you again for your time and your hard work. We all appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward.
John Howlizak, Cody Circle. Given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to keep my remarks pretty brief. Just wanted to direct your attention to section six point four point three B, the table there. It defines parking requirements for facilities of this size. And under the line for warehouses, there's supposed to be one parking space for every twelve hundred and fifty square feet of warehouse space and one additional parking space per employee. Just not even considering the six thousand odd square feet of office space, which has a higher occupancy calculation and therefore a higher parking requirement, just taking the two hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred square feet, dividing by twelve fifty, you come up with a hundred and ninety-three parking spaces. Even a dozen employees would put that over two hundred parking spaces. Why that's important is that when you're over two hundred parking spaces, there's another section of the zoning regulations, section six, that require a perimeter road. And by offering these spaces in the form of reserve spaces, it seems to me like it's maybe an end run around the perimeter road requirement. I don't think the zoning regulations envision using a town road like Kennedy Road as, as part of the perimeter road system. So the facility seems a little oversized for the property to me. I'm also a little bit disappointed that it's not making use of the railroad track that abuts it. Rail transit is much lower in emissions, much more fuel-efficient, and would reduce truck traffic for the town while still getting us, you know, essentially equivalent increase in tax base. So just giving you some food for thought there and some things to maybe formulate some questions on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
One other quick comment. It's not clear to me that these reserved parking spaces, you know, it's increased impervious coverage, are they part of the drainage calculations or not? That would be a good thing to get on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward.
Jared, excuse me, Jared Lewis, one seventy Long Hill Road. So as I was listening, I just have a couple of questions regarding the traffic study. In particular, I'm just curious why the study ends at the intersection of Sullivan and Ayers Road and doesn't continue. It's not as if the trucks would just stop at that point. I mean, we've all seen the, the R and L trucks, the Fed Ed trucks, the Aldi trucks traveling all the way to the intersection of Oakland Road, then following Oakland Road to eighty-four. So it would be, I think, important to see the study along those, the entire route until I get to eighty-four. Also, the number of trucks that they calculated, a hundred and thirty-eight trucks per day, I didn't know if that was based off of the number of, so I know they said they had twenty knock, additional knockout spaces. That could be additional trucks, if I understand that correctly. So I didn't know if that, this hundred and thirty-eight trucks is based off of the current setup with the knockouts there, or if the knockouts were taken out so there's additional trucks then on-site. Then just in general, I guess I had some words that I had prepared before. Just continuing to express my concerns about the just increase in truck traffic overall that we've all talked about in the past. And this idea that, like, this lady mentioned, this idea of this, we see here all the time the nominal impact to traffic that we see in every application. And when you look at that in sum total, this nominal impact of a hundred and thirty-eight trucks, just if you take the Skennell properties themselves, six properties, that's, that's probably getting close to seven hundred trucks we're talking about. Doesn't seem like a nominal number of trucks overall. So just, I think that's important to kind of look at that as that's taking place. And then, again, maybe these aren't the right words for this particular moment here, but I'm just curious to know, as, as we move forward, looking at these operations, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, and these trucks are going somewhere along, along roads, not just along Sullivan, not just along Route just along Route 5. You know, these truck drivers, I don't blame them. I mean, they're putting in Google Maps and they're just taking the shortest route possible, and trucks are ending up on roads that they really don't need to be on. We've all talked about it in the past, you know, Governor's Highway, Pleasant Valley Road, Chapel Road, just to name a few where I see them quite often. It just seems that the town needs to do something to address that aspect of these warehouses and the trucks, not just in the specific location they're found in the, along Route 5, along Sullivan, but the town as a whole, where these trucks are all ending up. And are there ways that we as a town can address that to minimize the impact of these, these warehouses and the truck traffic that they're, that they are creating? One thought I had would be somehow, you know, these, often these sites are trying to win tax abatements, are there ways to put those types of agreements in writing? That, you know, the abatement is, is only good if trucks are avoiding roads X, Y, and Z. The other point I wanted to make was just regarding the infrastructure to electric vehicles that was mentioned before, which, I mean, I appreciate that being a part of a plan. I would be curious to know, and maybe this is something to look forward to in the future as you guys are looking at ways to update all of these things. Are there ways to include infrastructure for the entire, electrifying the entire trucking fleet? State of Connecticut now is part of a multi-state medium and heavy-duty zero-emission vehicles memorandum of understanding. I think they signed that a couple of years ago. Our state looking at this as the 10th worst air quality of all the states in the country. You know, I can't blame that all on truck traffic, but certainly must play a role. And it seems that we should be a part of trying to push for the electrification of, of entire fleets. State of Connecticut is pushing for it. Like I said, I believe it's 15 states right now that have signed this memorandum of understanding. And, you know, if you just look at the numbers, I know it's a, it's a slow build, but there are a number of companies, I believe it was Cisco just signed a deal for something like 600 or 700 electrified, electric trucks. I think it was in California, started in California. But it, but it is coming, and it would be interesting to see. They're showing pictures here of, you know, what this is going to look like in 10 years. This memorandum of understanding is that, is saying that they want, you know, at least 30% of fleet vehicles to be electrified. So, you know, when we look at that picture there, you should be thinking about, now would be the time to try to implement those, you know, putting those, that infrastructure in place now rather than trying to retrofit it at a later date. So those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, we'll turn to Commissioners. Commissioner Carey.
Some of my questions have gotten answered by some of the discussion. I was concerned about the opening on Sullivan Road. You know, I had the opportunity to drive back and forth on Sullivan to Route 5 numerous times in the last week. And trucks turning onto Sullivan, you know, somebody once talked about this, they can't turn in, in the right-hand lane. They, they actually do come out to the left-hand lane. I watched this happen multiple times over the last week. So very concerned about openings directly onto Sullivan from that driveway. I think that, you know, we're just asking for trouble there. I'm not sure why the, the loading area is visible from Sullivan. You know, if we're saying that it shouldn't be visible from Kennedy, why is it visible from Sullivan? And, and, you know, when you come down even on the drive-by that you shared, you can't see the loading docks from Sullivan. I was just curious.
Do you want them to possibly play that rendition again or?
I mean, you can clearly see the loading dock from Sullivan's. I was just curious, like, if we say that we're trying to block it from Kennedy, Sullivan's a much more heavily traveled road. Why are we allowing it to be visible from Sullivan? But again, I'm new to this, so, you know, you can kind of ignore me. My other question is, where's the snow shelf for when we're plowing? As I'm looking at the parking spaces, where's the snow going?
Do you want to address that to Ben Wheeler?
Yes, please.
So on the landscape plans sheet, CLS 1 and CLS 2, we are showing the snow storage areas between the auto parking area and Kennedy Road. We discussed with the applicant, the operations of snow removal, and they agreed to use those areas for snow removal. It may not seem like a lot, given the size of this facility, but we did run some calculations. And if you take those areas in between the auto parking and Kennedy Road, and it's not a straight berm, but if you put them in snow piles, essentially pyramids of those areas, essentially that area would provide sufficient snow storage for all the pavement on this site for up to 80% of the time in Connecticut that there is snow on the ground. So for, for over three-quarters of the time there's snow on the ground, there would be sufficient snow storage in that area. And that's not, that is counting when you have additional snowstorms on top of each other. We researched records at Bradley Airport that accumulated total snow storage for additional storms, measured the amount of snow on the ground. And like I said, those areas would accommodate, 80% of the time there, there is snow on the ground in Connecticut. And as is typical with, with many facilities, retail, industrial, and, and offices, you know, at the very largest snowstorm events, you know, if that's not accommodated, then, then they would have to make accommodations to, to remove it off-site. And in speaking with our, our client, they, they would be willing to do that.
Thank you. And then I just want to clarify. So the footage from the corner of the building that's closest to Sullivan Avenue, is that 55 feet?
I calculated that to the property line, so that wouldn't be the edge of pavement, but I think it's, you know, your building setback's 50 and it's just slightly beyond that, so that's...
That's approximate. We always take it from the property line. We don't take it from the pavement, travel lane for Sullivan Avenue.
Okay.
So there's additional land beyond that.
Okay.
And then, I think one of the members of the public raised this, but does the number of loading docks impact the volume of truck traffic? And was the truck traffic study on the 25 loading dock or on the expanded number of loading docks?
Chris McLean from Langen for the record. So the, the truck traffic is based off of square footage, based on the IT trip generation manual. So they have a, a calculation that you could do to estimate the truck traffic per square foot. And that was how the calculation was run. It's not based on number of loading docks or number of trailer spaces or anything. It's simply by square footage and how facilities of, you know, this size would, how many trucks they would, they would take.
I have one more question for you.
Sure.
You said that there was going to be a nominal impact to traffic, but what about during the peak periods?
So our calculations were during the peak periods.
Okay.
The morning peak hour and the evening peak hour, specifically the, the highest volume hours of the Sullivan Road corridor. And we analyzed the change in, the change in queue length and the change in average delay per vehicle. And there's a level of service A through F that's defined for each, for delays based on the number of seconds the average car is being delayed for, and that there was no change in the average delay, or no change in the level of service for, for any of the movements that we analyzed through our, through our road network that we, as part of our analysis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kev Agnaro.
Thank you. I have a bit of points to get to, so I just want to start with some of the general details of this. I'm, I'm curious about for, you know, the exterior, you know, the parking lot, for example, for parking spaces in general. What, what's security going to be looking like for, for, for this? Whether either interior or exterior? I'm curious. I know some warehouses will have security on the outside. I'm just curious if this is going to be an example of that.
They don't all have gates and they don't have fences, but they all have some form of security system with cameras and some kind of security staff. So they, they all have that. So they'll be monitoring what's going, the operations going on inside the building and outside the building all the time, facility of the size. You know, no one's allowed in the back other than authorized vehicles, and they'll know who's coming in. But they don't, in this particular case, we're not proposing a gate. We're not proposing fencing. If a particular tenant comes and requires that, we'd have to return to this commission for a modification to the site plan.
All right. I'll, I'll keep you up there for, for the next question because it sort of relates to that as well. So for, even though there's no tenant, I'm curious for either hours of operation and days of operation, because if you're going to enforce the back parking lot, I'm curious how that's going to be enforced as well. Like you said, there's security cameras monitoring that. If it's like five days a week, for example, there's, again, I, I'm, I'm just curious on that, or if it's seven days a week, certain hours, or if there will be someone in the building at all times, I'm just curious on that as well.
Well, most of these facilities are 24/7/365. So we'll, we'll assume that there's going to be onsite security, but they can also have remote, remote security operations. Plenty of them have that as well. Certainly that service is available, so they can be monitoring it through cameras and other, other features all the time. And if somebody comes in there, somebody's not supposed to be in there, if they don't have a gate and they don't have a fence, then they'll have to address that for security purposes, and they, I'm sure they have, all have a protocol for that. You know, call the police if there's nobody onsite at the time.
All right. I was reading through the, the report, I'm not, I'm pretty sure it's from you guys, noting that there's going to be 110 associates for, for this building. I, I, I'm curious, out of those, I, I assume all of them will be full-time, you know, on, on the lot. I'm, I'm just curious about that number as well, because I know the amount of associates it can relate to the, the parking spaces required for this warehouse as well.
Yeah, well, that's for total. That's not peak hour, peak, peak shift. So, you know, you know, we're going to certainly have adequate parking for the total number of employees on the site and then some.
Okay.
Even, even without the reserve.
Okay. I wasn't sure if 110 was like a maximum amount, like if any more, like you'd have to add more parking spaces or if that was, you know, what you were expecting or, but...
Our expectation is that the parking spaces that we have proposed before the reserve is built will have plenty, more than adequate parking for this facility. We will not have to do the reserve. We think that the parking requirements that are embodied within your regulations for warehouse distribution centers are excessive, based on what's happening nationwide with these types of facilities.
All right. Thank you. And, and one last thing, sort of with the Sullivan Avenue issue, and sort of just a recommendation, with oncoming trucks out of that lane merging onto westbound of Sullivan Avenue, I'm curious if, and again, this could be worked out with, with the town, for example, if a sign could be put up for drivers going, you know, west on Sullivan Avenue of Route 194, just, you know, either warning drivers, letting them know that there's going to be, you know, trucks coming off of that property, merging onto the singular lane that they have? I'm not sure if that's something that we could do to at least warn drivers.
You're talking about if, if we retain the egress drive from the truck court?
Yes.
We're proposing not to do that at this time.
Okay.
Based on the recommendation of a town, town engineer and those modifications, we don't think we can make that work. And we're proposing not, not to do that at this time.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be reviewing that with town staff in the intervening two weeks, but I expect that that will be the case.
Okay. Just wanted on the record if, if there was some circumstances that would, you know, continue with that. That would be the only recommendation I'd have for that.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that might be there would be if public safety people want emergency vehicle access, drop.
All right.
Would be completely different configuration.
All right. That concludes everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dexter.
Okay, I'll try to be brief. I agree that the exit onto Sullivan, that little jig-jaggy thing is probably not good, unless this access easement actually makes a four-way intersection with Schwaier, which is kind of interesting to me for access onto this site. I mean, would that be the better place for the traffic light versus Kennedy? Just thinking out loud.
Well, then we'd probably end up having to do two, because the warrants are there for a traffic light at Kennedy.
Yeah.
Right now.
I just don't know how close you can keep traffic lights, but anyway, wanted to mention that. Good to know about the vacant house. That's going to be demo delay. And no possibility that the future tenant would want to use the rail and would, you just would have to come back to us to access it somehow or...
We, that's, that's mostly a, you know, a major factor is wetlands issue.
Okay.
We have extensive wetlands along the rail corridor there, and we are restoring them, preserving them, and creating them in that area. That whole area is going to be a conservation area for wildlife. So we're not proposing any along there, and that's a primary reason.
All right, makes sense.
Yep.
Over to the parking. Michelle, it seemed like a few years ago, we worked with an applicant on providing parking spaces that may not be used but required and using pervious coverage instead of paving paradise. Is that possible here?
Well, what that was is, was a way so that they could, if they had to add them, they would be able to go over the 65% allowance. So it really was a trade-off to allow them to get up to 70%. Then you had to do 10% pervious. So it really is not applicable in this situation.
It's not applicable here.
We don't need that, no.
Okay. And then the traffic study, you don't have to get up, but I agree with the gentleman from Long Hill Road that the Ayers intersection is a high, it's a, it's a turn to nowhere. It would really be much better if you went up, up to Oakland, Ellington, and Sullivan, because that's where you would turn to go to a highway or go straight to get to 84. So we know all trucks aren't going to go to Route 5, and so maybe it's a thought to look at that additional intersection beyond Ayers.
Okay, we'll discuss that with staff in the intervening period.
All right. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foley.
A couple of things. Ben, I did not, I, you know, we see these beautiful videos of what this is going to look like in 10 years, but I do not see an irrigation system to keep these beautiful lush lawns and these plants alive. So I'd like to see that as part of the application.
We'll discuss it with the application. Again, as has been mentioned previously, the, the number of requirements on this project are mounting, so we'll, we'd be happy to take that under consideration with the client and, and...
Well, we don't want to play that video back in 10 years and see a whole bunch of dead plants either. So on to my next point is the snow using that, that landscape, that beautiful landscape on the rendering as the snow dump, basically as the storage. I'd like to make sure there would be something put in place with an applicant, because that would destroy the landscape.
The, the, the snow storage area was between Kennedy Road and...
I understand.
Yeah, which the extensive landscaping is along Sullivan Avenue. So the, the snow storage areas was, was kept away from the street trees along Kennedy Road and took into consideration the landscape islands, keeping the snow out of those in the parking area as well.
I guess Christopher, the, was the truck traffic manual used to, were you, was Langen the traffic study expert for FedEx?
No, we were not.
You're not? All right. You're not, all right, so, do, do you know, what's that?
Jim, Jim Boobares.
Jim Boobares? Okay, all right, so, this, this light that's going to be, being implemented by the state, I would like to see that there be a no right turn on red at that time when that comes, because red lights mean nothing to the trucks. When, once they get motion going, they don't want to stop, all right? So, in all fairness to the people heading west on Sullivan Avenue, when a light turns red, it's red, because those tractor trailers are fifty-three feet long. If they start to turn, turn right turn on red, okay, and there's somebody traveling at fifty miles an hour on Sullivan, it's chaotic as it is right now, so I'd like to see, and I don't know if that's your purview, or, or do we ask the state for that?
We could certainly ask the state for that.
I, I think it would be required at that.
There's a number of factors that go into no right turn on red. We, we'd be happy to look at that and, and confirm with the state and the, the town engineer on that.
Okay. And with the sidewalk situation, I know with our plan of conservation development, it has to start somewhere. We just can't keep kicking it down the road going just because the guy next door doesn't have it. And, you know, he came before us in two thousand and six at FedEx. It has to start somewhere. So, I would definitely like to see that sidewalk put in place, because we just can't see saying the other guy didn't have to do it. So, now, you have to do it. And I would like to know, I would like the data done, if those knockouts are utilized, whatever your truck traffic manual comes up with, I'd like to see what those numbers are. Because Kennedy Road, it's not a superhighway, so, there's going to be, I, I would think there's going to be some queuing issues.
Based on the IT trip generation manual, the, the number of trucks is related more so with the amount of space available in the building, rather than the, than the loading docks. The number of loading docks. That's how, that's how the, the model and the, the calculations are set up.
Is that based just on tractor-trailer trucks, or is that also what box trucks that are doing, like, the small Amazon trucks that are... You understand what I'm saying?
It does include all of them, however, it doesn't distinguish between the two of them. And it's, these rates are based on historical sites that have been in operation that the, either people have submitted data on, or the IT has gone out and collected data on these sites, and then built them into their own internal model, published this document. So that you can create sort of an average of, of trucks per square foot. And, and that, that applies to the, the methodology for, for cars as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner LeBlanc.
Thank you, I just have a few questions. On Kennedy Road, there's a couple smaller businesses on the right-hand side. And I'm assuming that, as busy as these places can be, that there'd be trucks queuing on Kennedy Road, and I'm not sure how busy those businesses are, but they do need proper access into them, and for anybody who needs to visit those buildings. Queuing trucks has been a concern, and certainly, it's, it's a concern of mine, that these other businesses have proper access. And another comment I have is, uh... Oh, it goes back to the landscaping plan. I saw you had the beautiful trees and the berm and all that, and there's a rendering of telephone poles and wires overhead. And this somehow, not saying it is here, but just want to answer the question, how close are the wires to the actual proposed trees, and hoping they're somewhat apart. I hate it when they grow in fifteen years and never sources off there, cutting the tops off of them.
Those utility poles on Sullivan Avenue are, are right along the edge of the road. Our landscaping is set back some distance from those poles, because we do have, as Mr. Jameson mentioned, we have an underground detention system in that area too, right along the property line. So our, our trees are beyond that as well, to make sure that they, they don't interfere with that. So I don't anticipate any, any problems once those trees reach maturity growing into those utility lines.
All right, cool, thanks, Ben. And last question, and just thinking down the road here, so to speak, but... I've worked on a couple of large projects on my former employer, for my former employer. One at Rocky Hill, and actually one at Bradley, and one in Waterbury Oxford Airport. And when you, while development came to those areas, and the water main couldn't support much more. So what had to happen was, when we introduced a large building, there just wasn't enough water to support something this big. And this is probably looking ahead, and the reason I'm saying this is because we had to reinvent how fire suppression and how you achieve water to put out potential fire, even use of water in the building, because it just wasn't enough to go around. And that said, if that's the case here, there would have a change on the site. And it's just something to think about as you're looking ahead, because we've had two large warehouses on the junction of Route five. We had FedEx, and... This may tip it, I'm not sure the size of the water main is probably MDC under Sullivan Avenue, but this is something I've run into fifteen years ago, ten, probably seven years ago. Just want to bring it up. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Vettieri.
I don't want to re-ask some of the questions that I had here, because they were already asked, especially about the snow and the snow location. I was, I was concerned about that, and I think that those questions were answered well. I did have a question about the, I guess you said there were four hundred and twenty total vehicle trips per day? And at some point it came out that there was sixty-nine trucks in and sixty-nine trucks out, so I guess that's a hundred and thirty-eight of that. So, that's part of the total four-twenty? It is, okay, so then that's like a hundred and, a hundred and forty-one cars in and a hundred and forty-one cars out each day on top of that? Okay, all right, thanks, that was, that was clarification, otherwise I'm just asking the same questions again.
Okay. Commissioner Bernstein.
Mr. DeMaely, we'll start with you. Distance from residential. So I went to Google Earth to see if I could figure that out, or get some sense of it, and it's not a good way to do it. Can you share any information or any insight on how...
Where are they?
Yeah, what, where, where are neighborhoods, residences, other than the dilapidated one?
Troy Road out in the back. There's some houses, there's the old Monsanto building, I forget which entity is doing it now. They recently reclaimed glass and made it into fiberglass component, clean glass.
What's the distance, would you imagine?
It, it's quite a hike, I, I don't know the total distance from that. It's, it's, it's quite a distance. Yeah, if you look, if you look at our cover, cover sheet, if you look within five-hundred-foot radius of our site, there's no residential. So it's wait, well, and you'll see... It's, you're, you're just hitting the corner of the buil, yeah, you're just hitting the corner of that building across from Aldi, which is the, um, glass reclamation's... Yeah, it used to be Nutmeg Recycling, I don't know what entity's operating there now. And it, and, and yeah, and that fire feet doesn't even reach the back of the FedEx building, next door. And it goes way beyond that. So there's quite a distance, that's the closest that I'm aware of, other than the house, the dilapidated house on the property.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to see it gone, but maybe some people think it's a treasure.
So, uh, they took down the image, but the, the color image of the site, and I realize that's not drawn to scale, but what I'm trying to get in my mind's eye is the traffic flow of trucks around the site.
Yeah.
And, um, it seems tight to me, and I want to go back to something that was mentioned by one of the residents about a perimeter road. Is that something that would enhance that? Because I can see, you know, possible backup or some queuing issues?
Well, first, first of all, we have, we absolutely have adequate room for the trucks to move, maneuver in, and get into our court, and they can even, they don't have a blind, they can back in without a blind side back in. So, we've designed it for that. There's plenty of room back there for the trucks to maneuver and get out. And if we end up reducing, removing the access drive out to Sullivan Avenue, which I think will happen, from the truck court, then we'll have a turnaround, so they can turn around and go right back out. And there's a, a big length there, and, and there really almost no businesses north of FedEx, just a couple on the east side that Mr. LeBlanc was referring to, small buildings there. You know, so we've got plenty of length there, we don't, we don't see any problem with trucks going in and out at all. And, and the cars will have two access points to Kennedy Road on the east side of the building, for the passenger cars, for the employee parking, that should be no problem getting in and out. I don't see, see purpose to it at all, to have a perimeter road. And, and as we said, we, we don't expect to go beyond, beyond the initial parking that we built for this type of facility.
All right, appreciate that. One more question regarding traffic. And I too, like so many of the other commissioners, that commented on the fact that there were four intersections cited, one being at Ayers. And frankly, when I heard that, my perspective was the opposite of what some of the others said. I thought to myself, well, considering where this is, it would seem to me that the vast majority of the truck traffic in and out would be using Route five. So, A, is that accurate, in your view?
It's Mr. McLean's view.
Right.
He's the expert.
I just, I, I guess I just assumed that they would be using Route five to get on two ninety-one, but that may not be the case.
If you could just state your name again for the record.
Oh, sure, Chris McLean, Langen Traffic Engineer. Yeah, the, the majority of the truck traffic will be going towards Route five.
So it would be coming from and back out to Route five?
Exactly.
So, so based on that, including a light at Ayers, would seem to be odd to me?
So, as one of our data collection, we looked at Ayers Road, or, we collected data at Ayers Road in preparation of, of, of a, of a facility, as we were analyzing the trip generation for potential different sites. The Ayers Road has a, has a lot of residential uses up Ayers. And if there was a high proportion of people that would be employed at this facility coming from that, we, we thought Ayers would be one of the main ways that people would get there. And it's a signalized intersection on the east side of the site, where if we had stopped our, our study kind of closer to the, closer to Kennedy Road, we wanted to have an analysis point east of the site to, to show that any through traffic, or any traffic going, you know, to, a, any employees going to the, these residential areas, that the, the, the signal could, could handle that.
Okay, all right. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ben, could you come up, please? The regulations talk about showing the traffic movements, I believe, correct? Did you demonstrate that you can make the movements that you're saying, that you can make? You haven't demonstrated it, I'd like to see it.
The town engineer has requested that, and we'll, we'll work with him on that.
Okay, great. But you'll also bring it back for the commissioners also, correct?
Oh, of course.
Okay, thank you. The west detention basin, again, I have the same concern that I had on the turnaround in the previous application. I just want to make sure there's adequate snow shelf for any snow deposited there that's not going to be into that detention basin. So, I hope you can show me that for our next meeting. Your parking, maybe you could show me on what page of your parking, which spaces are going to be held in reserve, and which ones are going to be constructed?
If you look at the second sheet, sheet, C dash O S one, shows the overall site plan. The hundred and forty-two spaces on the east side of the building are proposed to be constructed. And then the reserved parking will all be located where the trailer spaces are, are currently shown. So basically, if those parking spaces are, are to be built, or, or required to provide adequate parking, the, they will be, the trailer spaces will be removed and, and replaced with auto parking. As Mr. DeMaely mentioned, we feel that the hundred and forty-two spaces is more than adequate for this type and size of facility. So we really don't anticipate the need for those reserved spaces to ever be constructed, but there is adequate room, should they be required to be built in the future.
Okay, do you have a plan showing those reserved spaces?
It is on sheet C dash O S one. In the trailer spaces, they are shown in dashed form.
Okay, I'm seeing that, but I also don't see the access to that. I don't see how curbing would be.
May I approach the, the bench?
Yeah, please.
Your honor?
Yeah.
So, like, this would be the curbing, these would be the landscaping islands to provide the adequate interior landscaping, so there would be like an access here.
So would there be an island behind the parking places?
Uh, no, it, it would be, it would be directly adjacent to the truck court.
So how would that be safe? I mean, what would keep a tractor-trailer from either backing into or banging into somebody if they're making a turn? I, I don't see that, how that would be safe. I understand this is reserved parking, but I think there's still an obligation to show reserved parking that if it needs to be built, and I'm not saying this tenant might need it, but the next one might. So, we still have to go by the regulations, and I think you need to show a better plan there for the reserved parking. So...
We'll, we'll take a look at that.
Take care of that, address that for our next meeting. Because you've got, I believe, a hundred and thirty in reserve, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you have fifty-nine trailer spots there, fifty...
Fifty-nine.
Yeah. Okay. I don't have a problem with the lighting waiver. Where do the roof drains, drain do, just drain into the under-ground storage?
Hello, Mr. Chair? Yes, that is correct, they'll drain to the underground storage for poles and the western...
And just for the record, you are?
I'm Daniel Jameson, project manager, I'm PE in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, thank you, Daniel.
No problem, Mr. Vasco.
The traffic light needed. Originally, I know when FedEx went in, I had concerns about that intersection needing a traffic light. And at the original construction, I was told that it didn't warrant a traffic light at the time. When they did their expansion, is it possible that was missed by the state review? Or, I'm, I'm wondering, where's the point that we all of a sudden need a, a traffic light there pre this app... there pre-this application? I'm just curious.
I'm just going by recollection, but I can remember Jim Buber is doing a traffic study with the expansion and it wasn't warranted at that time either. I'd have to research that, but that's my recollection. Is that your recollection, Peter?
Well, I would-
You're right, Peter wasn't involved at the time, but I could go back and research it for the next meeting, but it did go back to OSTA when the expansion happened, so.
Right, and I'm just wondering where it got missed, if it is indeed pre-this application?
I don't think it was warranted at that time. I mean, that still goes back a couple years, so just volumes of traffic may now be enough with FedEx and other traffic, surrounding traffic, that it's now warranted, is what I have to assume. But again, I'll research that and be able to let you know at the next meeting.
Yeah, if it's not any heavy lifting, that'd be great. Thank you. Let's see. As I mentioned to Peter, with the access management requirement in the regulations, I'd like to see some type of plan regarding Schweire Road. Now, I understand that this applicant isn't necessarily going to have to build that. I think that would be any future applicants, but I'd like to see some tentative type of plan of how that would work. And I'm not looking for a big engineered drawing or anything. I just want a, you know-
Okay, we have something schematically for next time.
Awesome, thank you. Let's talk sidewalks for a minute. Ben, you want to come up for that, or landscape architect, or who? Do you want to? I should, Ben, get up here, please. No, whoever your team wants to address it. Right now, I think Sullivan Avenue, we have bus access, right? There's bus routes up and down there? No?
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah.
It's a long ways off, probably.
Huh, okay.
Having head in office on Sullivan Avenue and watching the people walk along Sullivan Avenue, and sometimes at dusk and stuff, would really be nice.
If somebody is on Sullivan Avenue walking to this facility to go to work, do they have sidewalk access to your front door?
We have, from the parking lot, they have sidewalk access to the front door, yeah.
From Sullivan Avenue?
Oh, from Sullivan Avenue?
How do they walk up and go to work?
We don't have a sidewalk going out there because we don't have a sidewalk out there. But if we had one out there, we'd have to show a connection to it. If you decide we need to do a sidewalk and in our discussions, we agree to do the sidewalk, then we'll have to have a connection to the sidewalk.
Okay, good. In the rendition of the drive-by, I noticed the top of the building was very generic. And I'm wondering if we're going to be seeing, do we have the requirement in the industrial that you can't see rooftop units? Yeah. And I've brought this up at previous meetings for other applications. And I've, I should be closer to my microphone. I've always been told that there's no way you're going to be able to see them. And yet, I drive by and I see them. I see them at the Amazon rooftop unit. And I was told that there was no way you would be able to see it because of the height differences. And this is from 291. And from 291, you can see the rooftop units on Home Depot. And I want to know how high the rooftop units are going to be above the parapet walls?
Louis will address that.
Okay, and how far from the parapet walls? I'd like to see some plan that gives me a visual, because I'm tired of seeing these rooftop units after the project is complete. Thank you.
No problem. Louis Van Loon, licensed architect. Usually what we see on these buildings is we'll run line of sights on them. The question we always like to ask is where do we need to run a line of sight from? Normal is from the property lines, certain line of the street, we'll take the elevation of the street, the elevation of finished floor, we'll set where the parapet height is, the lowest spot, draw a triangle and our units have to be inside of that.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. But the goal is to not see them from anywhere on the street. So if you want to do one little point, you're not going to achieve the goal, okay?
Sure.
I want you to show me that you're going to not see them from anywhere on the street. And that's why I'm also asking for the height of the rooftop unit and the height of the wall and how far the units are back from the wall. Because the numbers have to match.
Agreed.
Okay. You know what I want to see?
I know what you want to see. I mean, the challenge there is going to be, we don't have a tenant. So until I have a tenant, usually what goes in these warehouses, I'll have a small unit at the office.
Well, hold on, the challenge is to make the parapet wall high enough or the roof line low enough so that you don't see the HVAC units, okay? That's the challenge. It doesn't matter on the tenant, per se. Okay, if you're building a building, you've got to take that responsibility and know what the height of those units is going to be. Because a lot of them are standard, standard units, so.
Would you at least permit me to work with staff to pick a location from the street? Because I say that, I say that if we ran the sunboards, that I get that we don't want to see it from anywhere, while I go down half a block, three-quarter block down and I've got a twenty-foot grade change and all of a sudden, I'm a block and a half down and I can see it and at least get a direction that we can, we all agree on, that we can screen that from. So it gives me something, a target to shoot for?
The best grading is a tall parapet wall. Okay, so.
I think the visual that I think we're talking about is our Sullivan Ave drive-by, because you're relatively flat in that area there. And I mean, that is going to be your primary view shed, is going to be coming from Sullivan Ave in either direction.
Yeah, but there's different heights of their parapet walls also. And if their parapet walls are dipping, then, and we're going to see units, that's unacceptable.
Yeah, I think you're trying to figure out where to measure them from.
I'm trying to figure out where to measure them from.
What the, so we can work together on what we should look at?
Yeah, as long as I got a spot where I don't get a block over and now I'm a street over and I'm twenty foot higher and somebody's looking at me from a two-story office and I can see that, we ran into that.
I still want actual dimensions, how high the unit is, how high the parapet wall is. I want to see that stuff, okay? Thank you. Curb radiuses at entrances, I think you're going to be working with town staff on those, correct? Okay. And, you know, I'm going to look for plans that, or SK drawings, that demonstrate that you meet those turn requirements. I'm also wondering your turn requirements for these truck-trailer spaces. Again, I want to see those movements. Are these, is this designed to have the trailer truck cabs off of those trucks that are parked in the parking spaces? Or if a truck backs up to those spaces, is their cab going to still be on the trailers? And if the cabs are not going to be on the trailers, I'm curious as to where they disappear to. Because I don't see any reserve areas like there was on Aldi's plan for if cabs are removed, they went off and parked in this little parking lot over here or something. I don't see that in this plan, so please be prepared to answer that with your truck movement drawings in the next meeting. Okay, and I think it was Commissioner Bernstein or Commissioner Vettieri mentioned, oh, maybe it was Commissioner LeBlanc, water storage. I know on some of the other distribution centers, there's tanks that are located outside for water storage. And I didn't see those on this plan and I'm hoping you can address that for me.
Sure. Ben Wheeler. The Mobus and Vistar building, if you recall, neither of those have a tank.
Amazon, let's talk Amazon.
Different water company, if you would let me continue. This is served by Connecticut Water. Their requirements are different from the MDC. The Amazon facility, the Home Depot and Coca-Cola are all served by the MDC, whereas Mobus and Vistar were served by Connecticut Water. Connecticut Water was satisfied with providing a booster pump and not a storage tank. And they run their calculations differently and their requirements are different, so that's why there is no tank shown at this point in time.
Just bringing that up, is there a backup generator for electricity in case the power's out and you have a fire in that instance?
At this point in time, there's no outdoor generator proposed.
Okay. I would just want to make sure that the fire marshal is comfortable with any water needs.
And also just to add to that, too, with fire suppression systems, you know, the final design is based on, you know, the type of goods that are stored in this facility. And when that is determined and the exact potential suppression system that's required, that's what we work with, the mechanical engineers work with, you know, the water company and those potential demand flows if the suppression system does go off. And they model that and, you know, understand Commissioner LeBlanc's concern about the impact on the surrounding water supplies, but they take all that into account when those demands are calculated into the system.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that completes my questions at this time. Commissioner Foley?
One quick question, Peter. Does the WPCA have to give, grant their approval for this as well? Are they included?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And it always has to follow you.
What's that?
It always follows this commission.
Okay.
We can't go there in advance typically. We used to be able to, we can't do that anymore.
Okay.
For staff and talking with the town council, I'm just curious at how they will look at this land being donated back, because no matter if it's wetlands or whatever, there's still a tax to it if it's in the applicant's hands, if it's in the town's hands, we're not collecting anything on it.
Yeah, I think though the tax with the conservation easement would probably be pretty insignificant with the easement on it, but we can certainly look at that.
Okay.
We've offered to go either way. You can have us retain it.
Yeah.
And have a conservation easement over it, or we can give it to the town.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, oh, Commissioner, oh.
I just have one request of the applicant. We will be coming up in two weeks if we continue. We do have a July 1 drop dead date on our site plan, sixty-five day, so we kindly request the applicant grant an extension of that time.
You don't want it automatically approved? Okay.
We kindly ask the applicant to grant an extension.
Attorney Cody is, we'll take care of that, I guess. Yeah, he'll do it.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, anything else that needs to be addressed tonight? If not, a motion to continue the public hearing to our second meeting in June?
Motion to continue the public hearing, June 28.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of continuing the public hearing to our June 2, June meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, and due to our late hour, we are officially adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah, thank you.